4:30. Okay, Dario, whenever you are ready.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Good afternoon, everyone. Today is Wednesday, August 7th. It is 4:30 p.m. My name is Vivian Malauulu. I am president of the Long Beach Community College District Board of Trustees, and I'd like to welcome you to our regularly scheduled monthly meeting. We are in Section 1 of the agenda, Item 1.1. I've called the meeting to order. Madam Secretary, roll call please. Virginia Baxter?
Here.
Here.
Herlinda Chico?
Present.
Vivian Malauulu?
Here.
Uduwakcho Antuk?
Here.
Sunizia?
Here.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Item 1.3, do we have any public comments on closed session items? None received. Thank you. Items 1.4, 1.5, 1.6, 1.7, 1.8 are all closed session items. 1.4, personnel pursuant to Government Code Section 54957, public employee employment, performance evaluation, discipline dismissal release, employee ID number 0470916. Item 1.5, conference with legal counsel, existing litigation per Government Code Section 54956.9A, PRB case number LA CE6788E, certificated hourly instructors of Long Beach City College, CTA NEA versus Long Beach Community College District. Item 1.6, conference with legal counsel pending litigation, Government Code Section 54956.9, Romali versus Long Beach Community College District at AL LASC, case number 24STCV1419. Item 1.7, personnel pursuant to Government Code Section 54957.6, management team unrepresented group, conference with agency-designated representative Mike Munoz. Item 1.8, public employee performance evaluation, Government Code Section 54957B1, board counsel. And item 1.9, we are going to recess into closed session. It is 4:32 p.m. We will be back at 5:30 sharp. Thank you.
We are on section two of the agenda, actually. All right, everybody, it is Wednesday, August 7th, 2024, 5:31 PM. My name is Vivian Malauulu. I am president of the Long Beach Community College District Board of Trustees. Welcome to all of you and our guests. We just concluded a first open session. We will be returning, excuse me, we just concluded a first closed session. We will be returning to a second closed session when we adjourn this meeting. We're moving on to section two on the agenda, which is open session. I am calling this meeting back to order. And we are very fortunate to have our brand new student trustee for the 2024-2025 academic school year with us. I've already made arrangements with him. He will be leading us in tonight's flag salute, and his name is Gee. So if you would please join us in the flag salute, Gee Gonzalez, welcome.
Do you stand with your right hand over your heart? You may begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Gee. Item 2.3 on the agenda is our land acknowledgement. Long Beach City College acknowledges our presence on the traditional ancestral land of the Gabrieleino-Tongva peoples. This land remains unceded territory. We acknowledge the painful history of genocide and forced removal from this territory. Long Beach City College honors and respects the Gabrieleino-Tongva ancestors and their connection to this land. Item 2.4 on the agenda, roll call, please, Madam Secretary.
Student trustee Gonzalez.
Here.
Virginia Baxter.
Here.
Herlinda Chico.
Present.
Vivian Malauulu.
Here.
Udoakcho Entuk.
Here.
Sunny Zia.
Here.
Thank you. Report out on closed session items. So we only got through one item, item 1.4, and item 1.5, I actually have a report out for that. The Board of Trustees took action on agenda item 1.5, pending litigation. Trustee Chico made a motion to direct counsel to pursue a litigation strategy. Trustee Entuk seconded the motion, and there was a unanimous vote to uphold that motion. Items 1.6, 1.7, 1.8 will be heard during our second closed session later this evening, long after you've all gone home. Item 2.6, public comments on agenda item. We do have public comments, and Madam Secretary has provided them to me, just to the benefit of the public. I would like to remind all of you that we have 20 minutes per subject with a time limit of two minutes, are we doing two? Three minutes per speaker. And we would like to begin with agenda item 3.1. We've got Ms. Carolyn Caldwell, if you would please join us at the podium. And she is on her way. Oh, it's the president of St. Mary's. Welcome, Ms. Caldwell.
Good evening. And first of all, I would like to recognize and thank the Board of Trustees of Long Beach City College. First of all, I am Carolyn Caldwell. I'm the hospital president at St. Mary Medical Center, and I would like to, first of all, thank you for recognizing our hospital chair of our hospital community board. On behalf of the St. Mary Medical Center, our board, our foundation trustees, our employees, physicians, we are so proud of Dr. Williams, who is the chair of our hospital community board. Thank you, Dr. Williams, for everything that you do and for your service and dedication to our community and for your passion around making sure that you want to do everything you can to improve the lives of others and for everything that you do, not only for our community, but also for all of us at St. Mary Medical Center. And once again, thank you to the Board of Trustees for recognizing Dr. Williams on this amazing lifetime achievement award that he received at the White House. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Caldwell. Many of us echo your sentiments. All right, we're going to move on to item 12.1 on the agenda. We do have several speakers, and we will honor the 20-minute time period. So our first guest is Mr. Andrew Gonzalez. Come on up, Andrew. There you go. Is he outside in the back, or? Let's see. Andrew? I can go to the next speaker. Okay, let's have the next speaker in the interest of time, Ms. Susan Redfield. Is Susan here? Oh, there she is. Susan is actually, has served this district in various capacities, so welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chairman and trustees, thank you for letting me be here to speak on behalf of the bond measure. Oh, my name is Susan Redfield. I live in your district, in the Wrigley neighborhood of Long Beach. And I guess even much more important than that, I am the mother of an alum from Long Beach City College, and I sit on the Board of Governors. I'm here to speak on behalf in favor of the bond measure, which is Assembly Bill 247, for $10 billion, 15% of which is to go to city colleges around the state. The funding has been identified for City College, our city college, to be used in three ways: for student housing, for technological infrastructure, and for sustainability projects. And I think for me, as an elderly statesman in this city, I'm awfully pleased with the work that the allocation that's being acknowledged for the nursing programs, both for the program itself, for the student, and increased capacity for the students, and upgraded classrooms and labs. I think you all know that we have a shortage of nurses in California, but particularly in Long Beach. And I know that our president of St. Mary's Hospital will echo this sentiment and be thrilled that this funding would go for the nursing programs. So I strongly encourage all of you to support this bond measure, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Now we'll go back to Mr. Andrew Gonzalez. Come on up, please.
Good evening, Andrew Gonzalez, L.A.N.O.C. Building Construction Trades Council, representing over 150,000 men and women in the building construction trades. Speaking in favor of the bond this evening, we all know that our community colleges are really the place where our community comes together to educate and train the future workforce of our workforce of our communities. I was a graduate of community college myself, making my way onto a four-year, but not always a four-year is always a path for everyone. Sometimes we need to do educational opportunities or CTE opportunities. We have to foster that by offering those work opportunities to members in our community. And that's what the community workforce agreement that you have here at Long Beach City College does for you. By adding a bond to that, you're actually doubling down on that commitment to your residents, saying, we're going to put you to work on your community's community college, training the future, training today, with, and we're doubling down on that promise to you. So, you know, I don't think I need to labor the point here that this is really important for your community, for education, for the future of our communities, the future leaders of this country, and then even the workforce we have here today, creating great job opportunities here with a bond, but also with your community workforce agreement. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next speaker is Danielle Jones. Ms. Jones, welcome.
Good evening. Good evening, Board members and members of the community. My name is Danielle Jones, and I am with the Los Angeles County Federation of Labor, and I'm here to express our support on item 12.1. This bond would improve Long Beach City District, Long Beach City College District, in needs of funding to support crucial projects such as replacing pipes, HVACs, and IT. Improvements such as these benefit students and our union workers who keep these campuses going. The board measure would also provide funding to complete middle college, an imperative way for high school seniors to do dual enrollment, to earn their associate's degree. It is imperative that we invest in our education system and community. This bond will allow us to do just that. The project funded by this bond and the project labor agreement will not only guarantee safety and safety standards for prevailing, prevailing wages, but ensure that 40% of the workforce on these project, projects are members of our community. These are addition, these are additional local job opportunities for our community, and they deserve that. In conclusion, we consider, in conclusion, this is a common sense bond measure, and we, sorry, measure, that benefits our schools and communities. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Ms. Summer Temple.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Summer Temple, and I serve as the chair of the LBCC Citizen Oversight Committee, which provides community and voter oversight and ensures fiduciary responsibility over the current bond measures. I also serve as president of the LBCC Foundation Board of Governors, a membership of 70 community and business leaders that have served the foundation and college for nearly 50 years. The LBCC Foundation supports the bond measure and the improvements it will make to our facilities, our students' experience, and our ability to continue to attract qualified and diverse educators and coaches to LBCC. I proudly serve in my positions because I am an alumna of LBCC. I can vividly recall what this campus looked like when I was a student here versus how it looks now. My favorite part of sitting on the Citizen Oversight Committee is the construction report, where we get to see section by section by section of how the campus is evolving and growing to meet, I'm sorry, is growing to meet the expanding and evolving workforce needs of not just our city, but on a worldwide scale. The new facilities that have been built by using the previous bond funds will be a lasting testament to the community's commitment in making LBCC a quality educational institution that is cutting-edge, accessible to the community and students, and meets the growing needs of the workforce of Long Beach and beyond. LBCC is a crucial part of why businesses like Boeing, Ford, Hard Rock Cafe, Hard Rock Hotel, Mercedes-Benz, along with the industry cluster of Space Beach have chosen our city to invest in. One of the factors that makes Long Beach a desirable location for businesses is that we do have higher educational institutions that help provide both a talented regional pool and an established talent pipeline that directs them right to our businesses and industries. By continuing to make the choice as a city to invest into our local community college, we are ensuring that our workforce and residents are equipped to handle the future needs of our city, our business, and to help maintain the overall health of our local economy for many generations to come. In June of 1964, Malcolm X shared a thought with the world that still resonates today that's apropos to this important measure. Quote, "Education is our passport for the future. For tomorrow belongs only, for tomorrow belongs only to the people who prepare for it today." Today is not the day to ask ourselves if we should continue to invest, but how we should continue to invest in our students, our city, our local business economy, and the residents that this college has served for nearly 100 years. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Mr. Paul Kaminsky.
Good evening, everybody. That's Paul Kaminsky. I'm the CEO of the Long Beach City College Foundation. This past weekend, I was with my daughter, Tricia, and she's about 35 years old. We were watching swimming in the Olympics, and we ended up talking for about a half hour about her experience of doing swim lessons at Long Beach City College and about her going off the high dive and how that prepared her. All my kids did swim lessons here. I've taken classes here. My son did early childhood development. This is not just a school. This is a community gathering place, and there's a sense of pride. I mean, you walk around now and the students, everybody, the massive sense of pride in Long Beach City College. I took classes here in '87, and the school has kind of fallen apart at that point. I mean, you walk around now, when we bring people back, they're in awe of what has been taking place here. And this is only going to continue. And what we're doing is, the school has laced us for 100 years, right? Almost? All right, we're preparing for the next 100. We are paying it forward to the next generations that are going to come behind us. It's kind of almost a sense of duty, and that's the way kind of I feel. I mean, I have a house in the district, and my son just bought a house in the district. So, you know, we're both going to support it. The other thing I want to say is I think Long Beach City College is the most important institution in the city, and why would I say that? It's access. Everybody has access to Long Beach City College. It's not one of those things that you have to worry about getting into. Everybody has access, and that's really an important thing. Talking from children to seniors who want to take classes. There's all kinds of opportunities. There's self-forming opportunities, and there's people that come back in and reinvent themselves at this place. This is the most important institution in the city of Long Beach, as far as I'm concerned. So this bond is going to create more transformation and more inspiration for the future of our community, so I support it. So thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Dr. Annette Morton.
Good evening, everyone. Dr. Annette Morton, and I'm here as a resident of Long Beach. As a student who earned a bachelor's at Cal Poly Pomona and my MBA and doctorate degree in education at Pepperdine, and now as a college faculty administrator who's worked at UC Berkeley, as well as Pepperdine University, and now at Cal State Long Beach, I understand and I can say that bond measures can improve the educational outcomes. They provide modern, high-quality learning environments with new educational technology and cleaner indoor air quality that will completely benefit the conditions of faculty and classified employees at the campus. LBC has done, LBCC has done an amazing job at using local residents and local union labor to improve the campus and the facilities here, but there's a lot of work that's yet to be done. So with that, I encourage and I ask the board to please vote yes on the bond. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Mr. Ray Lawson. Just in the interest of time, so we can get as many of you, if you wouldn't mind lining up, Ruben Minhades, Roberto Ruiz, and Evelyn Alvarado? That way we can kind of cut some travel time there and get more of you to be able to speak. Go ahead, Mr. Lawson.
Thank you, Board of Commissioners. Good to see you again. We, the carpenters, we stand in support of this bond measure. As you can see, a lot of our members here, they just got off of work and they came here because they're concerned about education, also concerned about the future for more work. A lot of, some of our members that are even working on a new project going on, the music building, and some have worked for the, the Labor Center that is built on the PCC campus. So we're talking about local hires here. That's how they were able to make it here from work, because they work right here, they live right here, Signal Hill, Long Beach, North Long Beach, and so forth. So local hires do work, and we have a lot of young people. We have apprentices that work on these projects. Young people, we have apprenticeship. You have an opportunity to go into the middle class. You have an opportunity to gain skills and knowledge through the apprenticeship and to one-day journey out. So we stand with LBCC. We stand with this bond measure to keep the work continually flowing, but also to keep young people, giving them a chance to better themselves, to make it to the middle class. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Ruben Minhades? Did I pronounce that correctly?
Perfect.
All right, thank you.
Good enough. Good evening, trustees. Thank you for your time. I'll be brief, maybe one minute. I stand here united with Carpenter's Union, Western State Regional Council of carpenters, but to be more concise and precise, Long Beach, Local 562. I live in Long Beach, homeowner. I'm a diver for the Port of Long Beach. I stand in strong support of this bond measure. It's going to be great for the community. It's going to be great for the students, everybody that's traveling through here, shopping around here, trading around here, learning around here. Definitely want to keep people working in our city. Definitely want to have skills and higher education and continue with our apprenticeship that I once was in, and it boils down to, you know, trade and anything vocational, anything educational. Just wanted to come out and thank you guys for this opportunity, and again, just speak on behalf of approving this, and it's, it's a win-win for us, and we thank you.
Thank you. Next up, I have Roberto Ruiz, and then Evelyn Alvarado, Herman Soria, Suzanne Englehart, Heather Hanson. Hopefully, we can get to all of you.
Good evening. My name is Evelyn Alvarado. I am part of the Carpenter's Union. I am a six-period concrete carpenter apprentice, and I too stand strongly with this bond. I feel that as a woman in the trades, it is very, very, it's very challenging to be working in a male-dominated field. It is very intimidating. It is very scary. But we have the opportunity with the carpenters to go out there and make it happen, and we want to be a part of this project. We want to bring students. We want to offer great buildings and somewhere where they can feel at home, even though it's school, but you still want to feel at home. You can feel comfortable in learning. And so I want to thank you so much for this opportunity, and have a great day. Thank you.
Thank you. Herman? Is that Herman?
Herman, yeah.
All right. Come on up.
Hello, Board. How are you guys doing today? My name's Herman Soria. I'm part of the Carpenter's Union. As you guys can see, plenty of these people here came today to, right off of work, brothers and sisters, we stand united. And not only am I representative to the Carpenter's Union, I'm a resident here in Long Beach as well, homeowner in Long Beach as well. And there was days where I didn't see that was possible. You know, I didn't imagine I would be where I am today. But through an apprenticeship, education, guidance, it wasn't just a paycheck that I was collecting every day. I was with the team. People were teaching me, getting me on projects that were close to home, so I could go home and spend time with my family. And we get to share that and pass that on with the brothers and sisters here today. So we support, and we're in full support of this bond here, because we want to be able to pass that to the next generation. And not only that, I come from a family of immigrants where I didn't know where my next meal was going to come from. I didn't know what I was going to be when I grow up. Now I'm in the trade, I can think about the future, investing in my city. And not only that, my kids, now they can look forward to college and higher education and something to be proud of, because I could tell you every day when we're driving through the city of Long Beach, when we're going anywhere, I'm pointing out every single thing that I've worked on, anything that I've built. And I'm sure all of these people here today could tell you the same thing, and it's just so proud when your kids see that and they're just attached to it. So I'm hoping we could get more workers here, more apprenticeship to beautify the city, reinvest into our town, and get more people to work. Thank you for your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Suzanne Englehart, Heather Hanson, Errol Cutley. Where are we at with that time?
Hello, as the LBCCFA president, we don't have a stance at this point. At that time, we did meet with a bond. We appreciate you having them reach out to us and to address some of our concerns. There were a lot of unanswered questions. There is something that I would like to ask. On that list, that the F Building be added to that list. There are a lot of existing repairs that are way past due. Our students are being affected by these repairs, so we ask that as this moves forward, that those concerns be put on that list and prioritized to be improved before we move forward.
Thank you. Heather? Come on up.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Heather Hanson. I am 33 years old, currently a resident over at the Traffic Circle. I am a journeyman inside wireman with Local 11. I am your local union electrician. I currently work at Marathon Carson Refinery. I want to speak in support of this bill in supporting the union building trades. This career has been a complete blessing to my life. This apprenticeship changed everything for me, especially being a female in a very high cost of living area. I was afforded the opportunity and giant savings from my career to leave a toxic domestic living situation. I know many people, loved ones you have, experienced all these curveballs in life, and these careers afford your locals safety. So thank you in support of this bill.
Thank you. And I believe our last speaker will be Errol. Did I pronounce that right? Errol Cutley?
Yes.
Welcome.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Errol Cutley. I am a Long Beach resident. I'm a union electrician, and I'm also a member of IBW Local 11. Local 11 has around 12,000 members, and about 1,500 of those are apprentices, and they are continuously growing. We represent union electricians all over LA County, many of them working and living in Long Beach. I myself, like I said, I'm a resident of Long Beach as well. Our schools need our support and investments. So tonight, I want to, I want to voice support for a bond that will upgrade your facility. We know that students have a higher probability of success when they have quality classrooms and labs. Please look to the IBW as a partner, and I hope this bond has all of you guys' support. Thank you so much. Appreciate your time.
Thank you. Our Daniel Osborne, Alfonso Ruiz, and the Roberto Ruiz, did you guys make it? Okay, are you Daniel?
Yes.
All right, come on up. Alfonso and Roberto, are you here? I don't know if that gentleman is Alfonso. Not everybody went to their, their time, so let's get, get you guys.
I appreciate you making the time for me. My name is Danny Osborne. I'm representing over 5,000 ironworkers of Local 433, standing before you tonight, though, as a delegate of the building trades. The building trade is obviously in the business of building things. We pride ourselves on doing thing, building more efficiently, more safely, and more responsibly than anybody else. Apart from that, though, we are in the business of literally changing lives, right? So we put local residents to work on a project. We're not putting them there for six weeks. We're not putting them there for six months. We're bringing them in, making them a bona fide union member, right? And they're going to have the opportunity to be making a mortgage-paying wage, right? Have full medical and be building towards their pension for the next 30-plus years of their careers, right? That's a literal life-changing opportunity. We can't give them those opportunities without the projects. Projects can't go forward without the funding. Therefore, we're urging you to approve this bond measure. Continue to give us the chance, to give your local residents a chance at a better life. Thank you.
Thank you. And are you Alfonso or Roberto?
Alfonso.
Alfonso, come on up. I do believe you're the last one, right? Roberto didn't make it? All right, welcome.
Hello. So good evening. My name is Alfonso Ruiz. I'm a proud member of the Local 5 Heat and Frost Insulators Union. My fellow tradesmen have already covered many of the things I wanted to discuss already, so I'll make it brief. Education is a foundation in which all human progress is built on. By supporting this bond measure, you're making a direct investment in the future of the students of this great institution. of the students of this great institution and the community at large. It's that simple at the end of the day. So again, I ask you to please support this bond measure so that this community has the best possible chance at a successful future. Thank you.
Thank you. We do have one more comment on the agenda item 4.7, the CHI Certified Hourly Instructor's Report. Mr. Curtis Williams, come on up.
Thank you very much. Yeah, I'm, I'm Curtis Williams. Um, I did provide some information to you. I'm concerned about some of the things that you guys have put into your, uh, Form 700s. So if you could look at the document.
So, Mr. Williams, uh, this is the second time that you have violated the public speaking agenda item. The agenda item that you requested to speak on was item 4.7. Please speak on the Certified Hourly Instructor Agenda Item.
Okay.
Thank you.
I can do that. Um, the, uh, it's very gratifying to hear other union members. I was a past president of the Part-Time Faculty Association, um, here on campus and we represent the part-time faculty. And, um, one of the things that, that we're having trouble with is getting a living wage because we're paid so little. Um, the other benefit that we've got recently was a, a new HMO plan, but it's supposed to be equivalent.
On the Certified Hourly Instructor Report, Mr. Williams, please.
It's, it's pronounced Williams. Williams.
I did, Mr. Williams. I did. That's my maiden name. I know how to pronounce Williams. My name is Vivian Williams Malauulu. Could you please speak on item 4.7?
Yes.
Thank you.
I tried to present on, as, as a representative of the part-time faculty, but our president did not provide 48 hours' notice in order to speak. So I had to come and do it in a public, in a, um, in the public session. I'm just, I am concerned that, uh, things are happening here on the campus and the district that are not appropriate and the treatment of the part-time faculty. 4.7, that's the, that's the, uh, the union, the union represents the part-time faculty is not appropriate. So, you probably don't wanna hear this. That's the reason that you don't wanna hear the stuff that I put in for the 700, your Form 700s.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. We appreciate your time.
It's Williams.
Am I, am I not saying Williams? I'm saying Williams.
Williams.
Thank you, sir. I, I know how to pronounce my own maiden name, which happens to be yours as well, your surname. Thank you, Mr. Williams. We appreciate you. Now we're gonna move on to the next item on the agenda.
Do I still have?
No, sir, because you're not speaking on the Certified Hourly Instructor Report, which it is my understanding that the president of CHI is not here this evening. All right, so we're gonna move on to section, excuse me, item 2.7 on the agenda, which is reordering of the agenda. Is there, uh, at the pleasure of my colleagues on the board, would anyone like to reorder the agenda?
President Malauulu?
Yes, trustee Antuck?
Let me move, uh, item 12.1 after 4.7 at the beginning of the agenda.
Are there any objections to that? All right, we can move item 12.1 after, which item? 4.7. Everybody okay with that? All right, thank you. Any other reordering of the agenda? Okay, we're gonna move on to section 3 on the agenda, which is Resolutions and Recognition. Item 3.1 on the agenda is recognition of our very own Dr. Felton Williams for the President, and this is the President of the United States President, Lifetime Achievement Award. This is a public recognition. We will allow for trustee comments, student trustee remarks, and then a presentation certificate recognition. The Board, the Long Beach Community College District Board of Trustees is proud to recognize Dr. Felton C. Williams, former Long Beach City College Dean, School of Business from 1996 to 2007, on receiving the President of the United States Lifetime Achievement Award in recognition of over 5,000 hours of volunteer leadership service to our great nation. Dr. Williams, we are so proud of you. Now, before we present this resolution to you and for the benefit of the public, the resolution is available on Board Docs, which you can open up, print, download, share, view at your pleasure. For the benefit of the public, that is, I believe we printed some out, did we not? Did we have some in the front? Oh, I'm sorry, uh, recognition, I'm sorry. We do have photographs that you've shared with us, which are on display on the screen. And now I'd like to open the floor to any comments from my colleagues. Trustee Zia?
Thank you, um, President Malauulu. Um, first of all, I have to say it's been an honor and privilege for me to introduce this recognition and recognize our very own Dr. Felton Williams with this amazing, uh, laudable accomplishment and achievement by President Biden. I am so infinitely proud of you, Dr. Williams. It is an honor to know you. You are pure human goodness. Thank you for representing us. It, to the best of my knowledge, this is the first time any alumni or dean or one of our own has received this high honor. So, I wanna thank you. I am so delighted to introduce this to you and I thank my colleagues in advance for their support. I know we have a, quite a bit of celebrities here tonight. I see Dr. Mike Walter who's here. Thank you, Dr. Mike Walter, for being here. Um, I see the hospital team here. You already heard from Carolyn Caldwell and I see Ardell Avellino, one of our own graduates and, um, family members of Long Beach City College. Uh, we also have the Foundation Board, uh, represented. Um, Mike, I apologize, I'm, uh, failing on your last day. You're sitting there, you're, you're giving scholarship to our students, so, um, and many of you who are here to honor Dr. Williams, I thank you. Um, we, there will be a photo opportunity, so hopefully you can join us for that as well. Thank you, President Malauulu. That concludes my remarks.
Thank you, trustee Zia. Trustee Dr. Baxter?
Thank you. Uh, I also wanna add my, uh, congratulations to you, Dr. Williams. I also wanna point out, uh, Rich Archbold is here from the Press Telegram and, uh, Jane Roder and Marilyn Brock. Go on, wonderful. Marilyn is a retired academic dean from Long Beach City College. So wonderful, good to see you, Marilyn. Anyway, I, I am lucky because it says you were the dean of business, but you were also the dean of social science and I taught history and, uh, Felton was my boss, so I had to be nice. And now I don't have to be nice, but I wanna be nice because you have really done such a, uh, an important contribution to our community and we're so lucky to have you involved. Felton and I have worked on a number of projects together and you always consider other people, not yourself, what are you gonna get out of it? No, it's you wanna help make our community better. And so I'm so happy that my colleague, uh, trustee Zia, uh, brought this up and of course I second it and it's, it's just wonderful. Thank you very, very much.
Thank you, Dr. Baxter. Trustee Chico and then trustee Antuck?
Dr. Williams, um, we've known each other for a long time and, and I've, uh, been able to see the work that you've done in the community, which has impacted so many of our youth, uh, our young people, creating a pathway, uh, helping them in so many different ways. The fact that, uh, you're, uh, a visible representation of something that is attainable is, is a beautiful thing that we don't often see. Um, what I do want to really point out, because I think we all know about your, uh, your professional achievements and obviously you've been congratulated and, and awarded, recognized for them. Um, but I wanna thank you for the vulnerability that you showed after, um, the conversation of, um, of police brutality on certain communities and the way that you shared your story about your brother. It was vulnerable, it was compelling, and it was necessary. Um, we needed to hear that because you, uh, are a, a visible and significant leader in, in our community. So, for, for that, for that personal, um, message that you sent to our community to try to bring some resolution, to try to bring some calm and some healing, I thank you for that.
Thank you. Trustee Antuck?
Hey, Dr. Williams, congratulations. Uh, I got the email and was able to watch the video of the presentation that happened and, uh, proud of you. I wanna congratulate you. We've known each other for nearly 20 years now through the NDLACP when I was an undergrad at Long Beach State and, uh, you were working here at Long Beach City College. Um, just, you know, for folks' background, uh, Felton served in the Army, served in the military, uh, he served our country and he's also served our community. Uh, the 16 years on the school board, was able to work through, uh, many challenges, but make advancements in the number of African-Americans in, uh, AP courses to bring the first ethnic studies classes to Long Beach Unified. Two schools in Long Beach Unified are named after African-Americans, Perry Lindsey and, uh, McBride High School, uh, in East Long Beach. Uh, none of that would have been possible without the work, uh, of Dr. Williams. Uh, he's been a mentor and friend of mine for many years. Uh, I was his campaign manager in 2016. I think we still have the largest, uh, win margin ever in Long Beach Unified history, 37%, 68, 31. Uh, and so, you know, get that last term in there, uh, but, you know, appreciate, uh, what you do, your leadership, uh, your mentorship. There's so many people, I know you've been on their dissertation committees, encourage people to get into higher education. Uh, you led the effort of starting the Project Labor Agreement, uh, Conversation Negotiations at Long Beach Unified. They created more job opportunities for apprentices and journeymens and, and specifically, uh, prioritized Long Beach Unified graduates. And so, uh, that work is meaningful and important to the community. And I also appreciate every time I call you, you answer the phone. And so, uh, thanks for what you do and congratulations.
President Malauulu, can I just correct, uh, the name that I failed to mention? Um, that's, uh, Mr. Michael Neils and also I wanna recognize Dr. John Davian who's here as well, um, heart surgery. So thank you so much for being here as well and hope you can join us for the photo.
Thank you. Once again, I'd like to welcome all of our guests here, um, especially in appreciation for you being here for Dr. Williams, whom we are extremely proud of. Um, many, uh, many years ago and several, uh, career lifetimes ago, I was a, uh, busy working mom who wanted to fuel my passion of writing and I was freelancing for various publications. And one of my assignments was to go out and cover an event in Long Beach. I think it was 2005 or 6 or 7, I can't remember. And the event was principal for the day and I had to find people to interview and, and remember, I'm, you know, I was a journalist in the 90s and here I am just at home with kids and working nights, looking for stuff to keep me busy, that mental stimulation. And when I get the assignment to go cover a principal for the day, I'm thinking, ah, that's not a big deal. Like I come from education, I taught high school, that's not a story, but okay, I'll go do it. And I happened to run across a gentleman who was working, uh, as principal for a day at an elementary school and he was the kindest person who gave me his time for this interview for a small community publication, the Signal Tribune. And I got to meet Dr. Williams and I got to know him that day and he became a friend of mine through this interview story, feature story that I did to just cover a local news and a community leader who was working for the day as principal for the day at an elementary school. And since then, Dr. Williams and I have been great friends. He is my constituent. We both live in the Wrigley neighborhood of West Long Beach. And his last campaign on the school board was my first campaign on the college board. So we had the privilege of making the same rounds, attending the same forums, the same events during that whole season and then our friendship, uh, was renewed. Since then, we've been colleagues and if you don't know Dr. Williams, you have to get to know him. I was once told there are certain phone calls you answer when the phone rings and Dr. Williams is one of them. And like my colleague, uh, trustee Antuck said, the fact that he answers your call also speaks to his character and his leadership. He responds to emails, he's very in tune with the community, he's always respectful. We share a common tie with the, the city of San Pedro and Long Shoring and a lot of mutual family and friends on the waterfront. So, for me, this was a no-brainer when this recognition was brought to light and I'm so proud of you. And we're so excited for the many things that you have yet to accomplish because yours is a storied illustrious career and we're so happy to have that front seat. So thank you and congratulations. So, we would like to give you the opportunity to speak, Dr. Williams, and then we'd love to take some photographs with you.
Yeah, it's a bit awkward, I tell you. I don't normally have any problems going to a microphone, but I'm having a problem right now. But I wanna thank, uh, trustee Zia for introducing, uh, uh, this presentation and Jenny and the members of the Board of Trustees, all of you, uh, for allowing for this moment. I really appreciate it. Uh, you've talked about a, a number of things, you know, relative to some of the work that I've done, uh, but I wanna just kinda hit some, a few things here and I have about 15 pages, I'm just kidding, I have a couple pages. But, um, you know, I was hired here as a dean and of, of business and the trades early on and, uh, the first person that, uh, welcomed me to the campus was Dr. Jenny Baxter and, uh, was very, very supportive and, and just, uh, giving me an overview of, of things on the campus and also with my work with the trades, she was extremely helpful. She introduced me to leadership Long Beach and that was very, very special and she's been there for me ever since. Um, and, uh, uh, we had an interim president at that time, Barbara Calvis. I don't know if any of you remember Barbara Calvis. But, uh, my first month here as, uh, uh, the dean of business and the trades, I got a phone call on a Saturday morning from Barbara and she wanted me to come down to the PCC campus. They had, uh, architects down, down there and they were looking at how to, uh, prepare to build the new facilities for the trades. There was one problem. It was raining cats and dogs that day. Didn't matter, she still was waiting for me to come down and I'm just saying to myself, I didn't sign up for this. Uh, but it was raining cats and dogs. We still walk that campus, laying the footprint for those new buildings. And I said to myself at that time, what the hell am I getting into here? But, you know, that was part of the orientation to the community college. I had spent 21 years in the CSU, California State University System, never had to work that, that hard. But here, it was hard work here. I'm telling you, it was very hard work here. Um, so from, from the dean of business and the trades, I transitioned into, uh, dean of, of the business and social science, two of the largest divisions here at Long Beach City College. Uh, you know, and a wonderful opportunity and one of the faculty members at top was Jenny in, in the social science area. Um, but having to find classroom space for your faculty, we all were given certain classrooms that were ours, but when I came, classrooms were being converted, laptop, uh, desktop computers were being brought in. And I had, uh, two of the, uh, departments on campus that really use a lot of computers. I had Computer Business and Information Systems and CAOT, those two departments. Um, so the rapid transition to, uh, uh, lecture space from, I'm sorry, to lab space from lecture space was a problem because the, the computers were going on in almost every classroom and you still had to teach lecture classes. The thing was, you got paid more for lecture classes by the state than you did lab classes. So that was the, the irony, but we were converting so fast and I was getting screamed at left and right by faculty because they were looking for lecture space. because they were looking for lecture space. So, one day, I was at a lecture, IBM here on campus, International Business. And they talked about smart classrooms. And smart classrooms represented a way to bring technology into the classroom. I saw that as a way to facilitate two things. One, lecture space and lab space. And it was a wonderful idea if I could pull it off. So, the concept was you bring in laptop computers, not desktop computers. And then, the lab was over with, you move the laptop, the laptop computers to a closet. So, I took that idea to my vice president for academic affairs, Dr. Marilyn Brock. And I proposed it to her. I said, "You know, we can really, we look, we can really get more out of the, of our rooms if we convert them to smart classrooms." She was right on it. She said, "Felton, I want you to invite IBM in to do another presentation for all the faculty here on campus." And I did. They came and presented again. And I asked the people at that time if I can get some, some cost estimates because I wanted to do that. I wanted to be able to have the opportunity to have that, you know, the flexibility for having labs and lectures without having to, you know, choose one over the other. And so, I took the information back to Dr. Brock. And I, I said, "You know, Dr. Brock, we're going to convert. Is it okay if we, if we, we move on this?" She gave me the funding to convert two of our classrooms. One classroom upstairs in social science, the other classroom in the business department. And what those classrooms represented were bringing in technology in the form of, of the internet, connectivity to the internet, and a movie screen. And, you know, and that was, that was, that was part of the, and computers. I still had to get the computers. So, I went to the vice president for academic affair, I'm sorry, the vice president for administrative services and said, "I need funding for these laptops." He said, "You're not going to get any money from me. I'm not putting any money into that junk." And I'm saying, "Wow, okay." But think about this. If we do this, we will continue to have more lecture space. And lecture space means money. I got the money. He was right on it. I got, I got the funding for the laptops. And we had our smart classrooms. The smart classrooms were more than just an opportunity to have internet connectivity. What those smart classrooms did was, was bringing an innovation in learning. Because let's say a person who was teaching anthropology from the classroom could actually go to a site from that classroom where they were actually dealing with anthropology and asked questions from the classroom. So, it was an innovation in learning as well. We made that presentation to the Board of Trustees at that time. And they were, they really appreciated the fact that we had done this. And smart classrooms were now the norm here at Long Beach City College. All the classrooms are now equipped to be smart classrooms. That was one little, one situation. And another, and I'll, I'll close this out pretty quick. Seamless said, "We had a committee representing faculty and staff from the three educational institutions in Long Beach. Long Beach City College, Long Beach Unified School District, and Cal State Long Beach." There was an informal committee. And that informal committee was tasked with how to make the transition from, from the Unified School District through, all the way through up to Cal State Long Beach, moving, removing the impediments out of the way. And so, I was asked by the president at that time, Jan Kehoe, if I would represent Long Beach City College on that committee. And over a period of time and working with a lot of the faculty, we were able to get some things done relative to moving some of those impediments out of the way. But one of the key things that we were able to accomplish through that committee was, I'm losing my, my thought here for a minute. It was, um... Why am I going blank? College Promise. It was a college promise. Out of that work, we got the college promise. The college promise represented a, a, a major piece for, for us. And this is an original picture of the signing of the first MOU. We have F. King Alexander, the president of Cal State Long Beach, E. Lo Oakley, the superintendent president of Long Beach City College, and Chris Steinhouser. And I'm in the background with Roberto Uranga, Jeff Kellogg, and Doug Otto. This is the first signing, the first MOU for the college promise. And the college promise achieved such recognition here and throughout the state. As a matter of fact, President Obama invited all three of the individuals to the White House to talk about the college promise on a national level. And the state of California allocated $5 million to replicate the college promise throughout the state of California. I'm going to kind of close with that and just say that, you know, in your life, there are so many people that come in and who are there to give you direction, who are open doors for you. And one of the things I think that we all basically have to understand is that it's a journey. And people are so genuine in their efforts to support you that we don't do things on our own. We, we get things done because somebody has laid the groundwork and prepared an opportunity for us. And I will always be appreciative of that. And the people that I've been able to work with over the years. Think about Lee Williams. We, we go back a little bit, Lee. Jack Rabbits and Bunny Rabbits and the whole nine yards. But we cover a lot of territory together. And the folks in this room, my vice president, Dr. Brock, who was always supportive of some of the craziest things that I wanted to do. But she was there to say, "Yes." And Marilyn, I appreciate that. I really do. But that kind of sums it up. And again, I want to thank everybody, all of you, the board, all the people in this room, my, my tribe from St. Mary Hospital. Thank you so much. And it's, it's, it's been a journey. It's been a very, very pleasant journey. And again, it's, it's been a very special journey. And I want to thank you. Thank you all.
Thank you so much, Dr. Williams. So, at this time, we'd like to invite you and your guests to come forward. The board will take a board picture with you first. And then, we'll take a photograph with you and all the guests who are here to support you.
We're happy to help.
Thank you, everyone. We are going to move on to section four on the agenda. Item 4.1, our ASB president report. Is Shamani Karas here? That is our new incoming ASB president. So, I'm sure she'll be here when the academic school year begins. And then, we have our brand-new item 4.2, student trustee report. Brand-new student trustee, G. Gonzalez. Welcome.
I have no, excuse me. I have no report at the time, but I'll give you, everyone, a little introduction. Good evening, everyone, board members. My name is G. Gonzalez, and I am the newly-elected student trustee for LBCC. I want to thank everyone for their patience. My introduction was, was supposed to be earlier last month, but I wasn't able to show up. And for that, I apologize. A little about myself. This is my second year at LBCC. I am a criminology major. I was born and raised in Long Beach. And I attended Stanford Middle School and Woodrow Wilson High School. I hope to attend law school and one day be a prosecutor. But before that, I want to be a public defender. I'm also considering a career in education as a teacher because that's why I'm here, is because I believe that education is extremely important. Ever since I was little, my parents instilled the importance and value of education. My dad, being a former teacher, taught me the possibilities and opportunities education can have on not just students, but the community at large. He explained to me the struggles many families and students have to endure because of a lack of resources and support. As he says, "Many students may enroll in college, but too few of them are completing their degrees." Unsuccessful college completion can be traced to poverty in one, in one form or another. Because of this, we all, we have to, we, we have to all do a better job to support our education system. I applaud my fellow board members and Dr. Munoz for approving items that greatly benefit students' life, like the construction of a new E-building, the future dorm housing being constructed for students, the food pantry, and more financial aid funding, to name a few items. I know there is so much work to be done. And I'm honored to sit, to be sitting here as student trustee. I'm going to do my best to listen to the concerns of fellow students and community members and to be the bridge between those concerns and the board members. Thank you.
Thank you, G. Item 4.3, academic senate president report. Dr. Jerome Hunt.
Good evening, Board President Malauu, Superintendent President Munoz, distinguished board members and colleagues. I just have two items to report this month. First, in terms of faculty professional development. In July, FPD hosted a three-day faculty orientation for our new night, for our new 19-member faculty cohort. Seven of our new hires are counselors. And more than half of the new full-time faculty members were previously adjunct faculty members at LBCC. During the orientation, the new faculty were able to meet with Dr. Munoz, Dr. Douglas, and other individuals from across the campus. They were able to complete two hours of campus training, have their headshots taken toward the campus, and learned about the faculty association and the academic senate. In terms of curriculum, last month, several faculty members attended the annual Curriculum Institute hosted by the Academic Senate for California Community Colleges. This year, we are proud to have presentations from our very own curriculum chair, Colin Williams, and our senior administrative assistant to the Academic Senate, Pamela Brackman, and myself. So, in closing, I hope that our... to the Academic Senate Pamela Brackman and myself. So, in closing, I hope that everyone has the opportunity to take advantage of some R&amp;R before the academic year starts, and I look forward to welcoming our new 19 full-time faculty members into the LBCC family at College Day in a couple of weeks. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Hunt. Item 4.4, Classified Senate President Report, Benjamin Chase.
Good evening, board and Viking family. So, tonight, I'm going to use my point of privilege and talk about something specific that I'm going through this week, and that's the Leadership Institute for Tomorrow. And I was just looking back at my packet for it, because we do have homework back in school again, and it was like an acceptance letter for it. And so, I just wanted to read some of the things that it says in it. Dear Lifter, welcome to LIFT. We want to thank you for your interest and participation in Leadership Institute for Tomorrow. LIFT program, this is an experiential leadership development program designed to lift your spirit, anchor your values, strengthen your leader identity, sharpen your skills, and inspire your soul. You will receive more if you're open to see, hear, sense, reflect, think, and connect with yourself and others. As higher education faces fast-paced changes, the LIFT program is designed to cultivate diverse professionals to become excellent leaders by engaging participation in an initial five-day immersive, intensive experience combined with ongoing regular web-based seminars, a leadership resource bank, and continuous mentoring sessions throughout the year. LIFT plans to enrich and empower you as the future leaders of tomorrow. The core in creating quality leaders like you lies in uncovering your strengths through cultural and community wealth, the arts, via technology in addition to seeking practice. All of our activities are intended to contribute to the depths and beauty of our diverse communities, both locally and globally. More importantly, we expect to lift your leadership to a different height. I reflected on that and realized how awesome of an opportunity this is. We have 15 current and previous chancellors and sitting college presidents for California Community College System that are there on a daily basis to support us, act as daily mentors, contribute to our sessions. Today, our session was specifically on developing your leadership character and voice for it. We got to show some artifacts of our own, things that we did professionally or personally, or that were important to us, and we bound them together. It was a process where you took the photos that you brought, put them into a booklet, decorated them, sealed them, and had them so that they're always there for you, but not where you can see them, but know that it's always part of you. So, it was an excellent experience to do part of that. Very much want to say thank you to my colleagues Irma, Alexis, and Arandi for holding down the office this week, because it's left them definitely strapped with me being out, and I appreciate that. And a special thank you to Susanna, my direct supervisor, for supporting growth, leadership, and education in making sure that we do have this opportunity for it. I encourage more of my colleagues to do this. We've shared out. I will say my one disappointment, there were supposed to be four other LBCC attendees. They were not able to make it, so I ended up being a team of one. So, thankfully, my brethren from the LA schools adopted me for their project, so I get to be included in their group project for it. So, I'm looking forward to that. I do want to share a critical acknowledgement for today, part of the eight... I don't remember now what number it's on. I have two colleagues that are retiring, let me put it that way. So, I just want to say you are appreciated and have much love for Sandra Torres and Leslie Haber, especially for Sandra being in payroll. When I first started at the college, she was one of the people I definitely needed to know and understand, because I first started when I worked part of a month, and I got paid straight hourly. So, I was like, oh, I got this. I like this. Works. And then the next month, I didn't get paid that way. I got a monthly, technically salary, that was, say, I worked hours and it was for hourly. I'm like, but that math doesn't work out. And so, my accounting brain was like, wait, that doesn't go. Like, how does this work for it? And then they had to explain to me that it's just set up that way. You get the same each month, but it is based off of your hours that you technically work. But I still was like, no, they don't add up. That doesn't work for it. And so, working in financial aid is a critical thing. Things need to add up, make sense for it, and do that. But I just want to say thank you again to Sandra for taking the time to listen to us, to always hear our gripes, especially when it was a raise time or the new fiscal year starting, and when were we going to get the opportunity to receive it? How are we going to do that? So, I want to say thank you specifically to Sandra for that, and Leslie for taking care of many multiple positions at the college, and both serving for over 20 years. One, I think, for 24 years. So, it's an awesome thing that they did. We're going to miss them. Thank you.
Thank you, Benjamin. Item 4.5, LBCC FA Bargaining President Report, Suzanne Engelhardt.
Hello again. Suzanne Engelhardt, Long Beach City College Faculty Association President. Good evening. As a tradesman and an educator and the Faculty Association President, I just want to circle back to the bond issue and the building F. Thank you, trustee Udewalk, for coming up and giving me some direction on how to advocate for some of our faculty that are in buildings that have learning and working conditions that aren't up to par and that they have been advocating for themselves for years, so specifically the F Building. And so, I will take your advice and follow up with facilities list to amend that and call with yourself. Also, I'm also looking at, on the resolution, that on page A4, that the concerns for the F Building and others that may come up when we get back on schedule can be added. The faculty from Faculty and Consumer Studies did present a few months back, and you know that there are high FTS programs, and many of our students get local degrees there. So, and again, our faculty are off schedule, so we didn't have a chance to send out a survey and get a more robust opinion and viewpoints for them to speak on the bond issue, as many of my siblings from the trades, you know, jobs are important, and also the working conditions and student conditions, because when these classrooms, and especially for the trades, CTE, the labs, you know, there are safety concerns that we have to advocate for our students, so we would like support in that area. I would like also to welcome our 19 new faculty. It's been exciting to meet them. We had the great pleasure for our new membership meeting and get to know them more and them to get to know us and the benefit of being union. Just a few updates on some issues that we are working on right now. I do appreciate that the district has allowed one of our members to utilize the catastrophic leave that was unilaterally removed from us, and no one reached across the table to talk to us when that catastrophic leave was removed from our membership, and specifically a member that needed it at that time, and that has added due stress to them. So, the fact that the district came across and is willing to, at least for this person, while we go through the grievance process because of the actions of the district, but I appreciate at this time that they are allowing for this individual, that we can revert back to the catastrophic leave. I appreciate that. That will take a lot of stress off this individual, so they can work on recovering and healing. Just, we are hoping that coming this fall for the Ombuds Program, this is something that was hard fought to get into our contract, and I'm really learning there's a lot on both sides that we really don't know about Ombuds Programs. It's not a mediation program, and we are looking forward to present to the board at some time in the future. We have also just moved back in-house to develop our own program through the contract and through best practices that we are gleaning from across the nation. And then, what I hope to bring more light to later on this semester also is the stipends. If you notice a lot of times in under item somewhere, I think, 8.7, when they talk about academic stipends, many times, there's such a range of stipends. Well, a lot of times, you wonder, why is it at 19.99 or something like 2,000? For full-time faculty in our contract, the reason that there is a limit isn't that we don't want to have our faculty get more money. It's that if there are certain projects, and there's a certain amount of money above $1,999, it's so to promote, to go out to the greater body, to give more transparency, to allow more people to apply for that particular work. So, many faculty administrators don't understand that aspect of it. Some are thinking, oh, I can only ask for $1,999, and then there's some abuse. So, I hope to work across the table here to get us both educated and to maybe enhance that program, so we could increase numbers and find other ways so that all faculty get access to certain programs that may be open and eligible for them. Thank you for your time tonight, and I look forward to talk more about that bond issue.
Thank you. Item 4.7, the Certified Hourly Instructor Bargaining President Report, Crystal Huckabee. Oh, I'm sorry. I skipped 4.6. I'm sorry. I see you there. 4.6, AFT Bargaining President Report, Robert Remetta. I apologize for that, Robert.
No worries. Thank you, President Malauulu, Superintendent Munoz, esteemed board members and members of the DIAS and our Long Beach community. It's a pleasure always to talk to you again. Tonight, I want to cover several issues. The first and most is that we're definitely getting ready for the spring semester or fall semester. We've been working hard to get ready for College Day and the start-off and the kickoff of the year. It's been going really well. The college is growing, as you all know, because of your guidance. So, we're all happy to be working as a team to make the goal of our students' success our primary goals. Anyway, I want to cover a few things tonight. So, one of them is the bond. So, we talked about it, and we are 100% behind this bond measure, because I've watched, and all of us have watched, the growth we've had. The M Building, the new success with the high gaming programs that we're providing our students that are ranking nationally with. We're doing all these things because of the past bonds. The W Building, I don't think there's any event that we don't somehow use a W Building. If you didn't catch it, there was a picture of our college at the Olympics during one of the interviews, when the water polo women's were being interviewed. They showed LBCC there. That's all because of bond money. These are programs that are benefiting our students. We have kid programs for our little kids coming in for swimming classes. This is all for our community. This is all growing because of the bond. There are so many more programs that we can do for our students in the future that we need more bond money to make this college stay state-of-the-art that it is currently. So, I got to move on because of time, but we're 100% behind that. It has done nothing but support our students and make our college one of the best in the state. On a more positive note, our parent union, AFT, supported Vice President Harris for her bid for presidential, for the President of the United States. And as such, our board voted on it, and we 100% support Ms. Harris for her bid for presidency, and we just want to let the community know that we believe that, you know, since President Biden actually came to our campus, and it's been the first time in history that we've had a sitting president come here, I think we have a good relationship with the current president and vice president, and I think we all see the growth that that's had for us, and we're hoping that continues, so we support her in her bid for presidency. And last, but not least, one of the important things that I've been waiting for President Malauulu to be back is, we also support her in her reelection bid for her seat. Just to say a few things about our president, Ms. Malauulu has demonstrated her commitment to Long Beach Community College, its student, faculty, and staff, as well as the entire Long Beach community. Her leadership during the tenure on the board is commemorable, and Long Beach City College class-wide professionals are grateful for respect she displays for our colleagues, as well as making a point to hear all viewpoints through the college. Her guidance and strong personal commitment to Long Beach City College has been exemplary, serving as an amazing role model for our students over the last several years. Therefore, LBCC EAFT Local 6108 proudly endorses William Malauulu for reelection to her seat. So, thank you all so much for your time, and I appreciate everything you can do, and please vote positively on the bond issue. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We did reorder the agenda, and we moved item 12.1 to follow item 4.7. So, at this time, we're going to advance on the agenda temporarily to item 12.1, which is under Section 12, Administrative and Business Services. Item 12.1, Resolution Calling Bond Election for November 5, 2024. This is an action item. After I read what the action is, I will need a motion and a second from my colleagues on the board. We will have a discussion and then a vote. The recommended action is that the Board of Trustees adopt Resolution Number 080724A, ordering an election to authorize the issuance of general obligation bonds, establishing specifications of the election, and requesting consolidation with other elections occurring on November 5, 2024. The board is asked to consider ordering a ballot measure, the measure, be submitted to the voters of the Long Beach Community College District, the district, which would authorize the district's issuance of up to $990 million principal amount of general obligation funds for a designated list of capital projects at both campuses of the district. If approved by the board, the measure and its associated list of projects, together with a tax rate statement advising the voters of the potential tax impact of the measure, would be submitted to the registrar of voters of Los Angeles County to be printed in the ballot pamphlet for the November 5, 2024 election, the election. The resolution must be approved by at least 2/3 of the trustees, and the measure would need to be approved by 55% of or more of qualified voters voting at the election in order to succeed.
So moved.
I've got a motion by trustee Chico. We've got a second by trustee Untuck. Before we proceed with the vote, I will entertain an amendment to this motion, because we have heard some of the concerns, not only from the faculty, but also from other constituents regarding Building F, to include Building F into this resolution. So, at this time, I will entertain that motion for an amendment.
So moved.
All right. We've got trustee Baxter with a motion.
I'll second it.
Include the Building F, and I heard trustee Chico with a second.
That was me, President Malauulu, and it was me that made the first motion, too, but you seem to keep skipping me.
Trustee Zia, I didn't skip you. It was trustee Chico. She said it long before you did. The mic hadn't even opened yet, and trustee Chico seconded that. Trustee Baxter, to my left, made the motion. We don't have to make it a big deal, every single little thing, trustee Zia. I know what I'm hearing. I'm sitting right next to her. Trustee Baxter, is that what you heard? All right. So, trustee Baxter with the motion for the amendment, trustee Chico with a second to the amendment. Now, at this time, on the advice of our bond team, do we reorder that language now, or do you just include Building F? Please come forward. You know, we want to make sure we defer to you and do this properly, and please introduce yourself for the benefit of the public. Sorry to put you on the spot, but I know you're prepared.
Thank you so much. Madam President, I'm Liesel Wells from the law firm of Nixon Peabody, and we are working as bond counsel for the district in connection with this proposed measure. The process involves simply voting first on the amendment as to whether that's acceptable, and then generally on the resolution. We can hand-change the attachment to the project list, and we'll reword-process it before we deliver it to the registrar, if that is the pleasure of the board, following the votes.
Sounds good. Thank you very much. That is consistent with the understanding that we were given earlier regarding any potential amendments on the DIAS. So, Madam Secretary, is there a discussion on the amendment for Building F first? Trustee Dr. Baxter?
Yeah, thank you. I'm very familiar with Building F, and so, I'm kind of surprised that it wasn't on the motion. I've got to think that maybe in the future, we're thinking about tearing that down and building something else. But still, if there are problems with that building, they should be fixed, whether the eventual outcome is to replace it.
Thank you, Dr. Baxter. Any additional discussion? Trustee Untuck?
So, I just think I would add for clarification. So, as you know, when we updated our facilities' master plan, there was that building condition index that was presented to the board that kind of rated our buildings either in kind of, I would say, good condition, fair condition, or poor condition. And so, obviously, when we started compiling the prioritization list for this potential bond, we had to prioritize projects. bond, we had to prioritize projects. But the good news is that by including Building F, that gives us the flexibility. So as we, as you all lived through in the last few years, you've had to reprioritize some of the bond priorities. So when you think for Measure M and Measure LB, what we said we were going to do 15 years ago has evolved over time.
Sure.
And so I think the key point here would be that if you want the Board to have as much flexibility as possible, we can include Building F on the proposed list and then have refined discussions as we continue to move forward and prioritize once we're successful in obtaining the bond. But the best way to ensure that that's an option would be to include it on the project list should we want to. And I would then defer to Acting Vice President Mike Gregorik to kind of weigh in and offer his thoughts as well.
Would you like to contribute to that, VP Gregorik?
Sure. I'm very glad my turn is on. Oh, there it is. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, I think you're totally right. And as a matter of fact, I was on a Zoom with Susan and some others talking in advance about the bond and just, and she brought it up. And she said, yeah, we really need to look at F. And I just had a conversation with Lee, and we're going to go take a tour of it and see where we are. But I think it's a really good move to do this.
Thank you. Dr. Baxter, did you want to add to that? Okay. Trustee Entuck?
Yes, I wanted to say thank you to President Engelhardt for raising the issue today. We briefly talked about the process, that it can come to the Board, we can vote on it. We do an annual vote of the facilities master plan list, and so if we can get it scoped out and figure out when or how much and where it is. The other item I was sharing on the project list, there's flexibility. There's an item for, you know, $30 million for building improvements. And so that's an allowable expense under the bond. So even though it may not have been itemized, we could still do it if that's something that comes forward up to the Board, and there's a quarterly facilities committee that meets and discusses and can forward things up. But I also am supportive of this amendment to make sure it's included in the new $990 million as a potential spend.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, second time speaker, Dr. Baxter?
I just wanted to tell a funny story. The president of the college, in the F Building, they asked for air conditioning to be put in. He voted no. He eventually decided, or was helped to decide, that he would no longer be college president, but he taught typing. They assigned him to the F Building because it didn't have air conditioning.
That's what I call poetic justice. All right, Madam Secretary, let's vote on the amendment first before we call for a vote on the actual motion. Student trustee Gonzales advisory vote?
Aye.
Virginia Baxter?
Aye.
Herlinda Chico?
Aye.
Vivian Malauulu?
Aye.
Uduwakjo Entuck?
Aye.
Sunny Zia?
Aye.
Motion carries for the amendment to include Building F with the resolution for the bond measure. And now, we do have a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any discussion on the actual bond measure? Trustee Chico, then trustee Zia, this is your trustee Baxter, trustee Entuck.
So I want to thank everybody who's come out, our union siblings, representatives of the trades. It's so important that you're here, and our members of the community as well, to express your support for this. It's important that we hear from the community. I also appreciate the stories. Danny, I know that you talked about some local hires. And when I came for the topping off ceremony that we had, I met a young woman who's a resident here in Long Beach, who is an ironworker and working on this project. Her family is all public safety, and she went into the trades. And she's an ironworker. She's the only one in her family. She's a constituent of mine as well. Thank you all for the opportunities that you're giving to our community members to have good, paying, safe jobs coming from, I'm a third-generation public servant that's been represented all three generations. There are a lot of things we could not get. I would not be a homeowner. My father wouldn't be a homeowner. My grandfather wouldn't have been a homeowner with a pension had it not been for the representation we have. So your input is important, and I appreciate it. Thank you for taking the time, especially after work tonight. Thanks.
Thank you. Trustee Zia?
Thank you. I too appreciate the brothers and sisters of labor, our brothers and sisters of labor. I was your first friend when we first passed the PLA in 2016. I championed that. I also championed it again in 2018, 2019, together with my colleagues. It was an honor and privilege to do that for our working families. I support this measure because it helps further the progress, moral progress for our working families. Many of you worked on my projects, both at the Port of Long Beach. I think I heard some of the pile drivers with the Western Council of Carpenters who were speaking at the Port of Long Beach. You just built a project at the port that added two acres of backland and so many jobs as a result of it. And you built for us, as Mr. Ray Lawson touched on earlier. And it'll be a pleasure to vote for this and support our working families by way of putting this bond on the ballot, and hopefully it'll pass. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Baxter?
Thank you. I serve, along with trustee Entuck, on the bond subcommittee, working with the people who are working on the phraseology and putting together the bond proposal. And I want to tell you, a great deal of time has gone into this. But what's equally important is the fact that unions can come out and testify on our behalf. And I really appreciate that because it shows the community that it's not just the college wanting to do something. It's people who live in Long Beach who want to make Long Beach City College better. And what's going into the motion, what's going into what's going to be paid for are things that are really important as far as upgrading our facilities and building new facilities and really recreating our campuses, both campuses. And I really appreciate your support. And I hope that the members of our community will see it that way, too, and will vote in favor of the bond. Thank you.
Trustee Entuck?
Yeah, thank you. I want to echo many of the sentiments of my colleagues of thank you for everyone who came out today. We heard from residents, homeowners, apprentices, journeymen, members of the foundation board. The president of Long Beach Chamber of Commerce spoke in favor of it. I think there's broad support for our efforts. And if you look historically, in 2006, 2008, 2016, the communities always stood with the college and made that decision to invest. And just today, we are not alone in these efforts. Long Beach, sorry, LA Unified voted for a $9 billion bond measure to go before the residents of Los Angeles. We, LA CCD, did $5.3 billion last November, or November 2022, and Long Beach Unified did $1.7 billion in November 2022. So we're not asking for that much. We're only doing $990 million. Only. And so it's, you know, just in the relative terms, there's always been such great support. But this is like homeowners, you got to fix your roof, you got to change the pipes. At some point, you know, the useful life of the building diminishes. We have gone through numerous presentations over the last year and a half, going through the item by item that we have some buildings that are over 70 years old here on campus that we're still using it as working space, learning space, and we need to go through and renovate it, just like any other homeowner. This is a very reasonable $25 per $100,000 assessed value. It also creates a matching grant opportunity also on the ballot in November would be a $10 billion construction bond statewide. We've included language for student and worker housing. There are state and federal tax credits available for that. It's based on a median income, so it's affordable. So if you have new apprenticeships, we have new faculty members, classified folks who meet those lower income levels, they're eligible for affordable housing as well. And so we can do student and worker housing. And that's something we currently don't have the funds to do. As trustee Baxter mentioned, we've been on the ad hoc committee together the last year or so, maybe a year and a half. And we've gone through, and the need is greater than what we're asking for. We've identified on the project master list, $1.53 billion is really what we need. But we're not asking for the full amount. We're going for a reasonable amount that'll let us move forward and focus on priority projects over the next several decades. The nice thing is when interest rates are low, we're able to make adjustments and save taxpayer money. And so we look to do that again and be responsible. You know, part of the requirements of this is there's oversight from the Citizens Oversight Committee, which we heard from earlier today. There's third-party independent audits. There's transparency on the website. There's transparency in the meetings. And so it's something that, it's a benefit for everyone. And so, you know, I support this measure. I believe it's a reinvestment in Long Beach and our workforce, giving an opportunity for young people, our partnership with our building trades and carpenters unions here today. We heard from the classified employees who will work in these buildings every day, that it's going to be a better working condition for them. So it's a win-win across the board, and I just speak in favor and ask my colleagues to also support the measure as we move to a vote.
Thank you. I'd like to echo what my colleagues have already stated. In support of this bond measure, I'd like to thank all of our sisters and brothers from the labor, the building trades who have been here, from the House of Labor. I am a card-carrying, dues-paying, meeting-attending member of ILWU Local 13. I'm a longshore worker, still a career educator, member of various educator unions. So I know how important securing contracts like this are to the advancement of labor. I am so proud that there are women sitting among you. I love seeing sisters in the building trades. I believe in the mission of the local hire clause that we've been able to institute and implement into our existing project labor agreements, not only for women, but also veterans and formerly incarcerated residents in our community for various issues. And I'm really grateful. I see our brothers from IBEW here. I see our brothers from ironworkers here, of course, brothers from carpenters here. Ray, brother Ray, you were able to bring in a troop, and we really appreciate that. So here's the thing. We're going to take a vote, and if it does pass, please know that we will need your support in the community to make sure that the voters also pass this bond measure because we don't want to flop. We don't want us to pass this bond measure and have it go on the ballot in November and then not have the need. And we learned that at our board retreat last week, how important it is to showcase the need for these facilities. Look at how many lives have been transformed. Look at the transformational improvement that happens with higher education and access to facilities that are state-of-the-art and award-winning. And I know you won't be here later, but when I do my board report, I'm going to share a visit that I did to a community college in Waterloo, Iowa, last month. And the investment that they're making in that community is transformational. And it's all because of projects like this, investing in a rural community college and being able to teach a workforce there that was really underrepresented. So we're going to need you boots on the ground come November, actually starting, you know, this month, making sure that the voters of Long Beach are aware of how important it is to pass this bond measure. So thank you all for being here. And with that, we do have one additional item that we need to settle before we vote, and that's the name of the bond as it'll appear on the ballot. So we have to make a decision regarding what it will be called.
Thank you, Board President Malauulu. And just for a point of clarification, to be able to, I'm seeking direction on potential ballot designations that we would like to submit as part of our package. This isn't something that you are required to vote on per council. This is just something that I'd like to seek guidance on should this motion pass. So I'd like to introduce a few options that have been discussed as potential ballot designations. CC for City College, BE for Belong Beach City College, and AC for Affordable College. There has been some feedback that the county might potentially consider a three-letter option, although that hasn't been done in the past. I don't, so we thought of maybe LBC. But recognizing we already do have a Measure LB, and so we want to avoid creating confusion, I'm putting forward these three in no particular order. CC again for City College, BE for Belong, to align with our Belong Beach City College campaign, and AC for Affordable College. As you know, affordable was the top kind of value statement that was rated amongst those who were surveyed. So those are the three that we're putting forward. And if it's the pleasure of the Board to either prioritize those for me, I'd gladly entertain that.
Trustee Baxter?
I just have a comment. So many people have commented on the Belong City College that it's fresh in people's minds. So in my mind, you know, you could further extend that and help in advertising. My three cents.
Trustee Entuck?
Yeah, just thank you, Dr. Munoz, for bringing that up. Looking last night, the city council voted, they're putting three items on the same ballot that will be in the voter sequence right before us. There's going to be the city, us, the county, and then all the presidential stuff, the way they do it. But the charter amendments are going to be JB for Long Beach Jobs Promise. And then there's a Harbor Commission and Utilities one, and they call that HC for Harbor Commission. And then there's a tax measure on closing the corporate loophole for power plants, and that's Measure LB that they're already using to save LB services. So just to make sure we're not in conflict, because we will be after those three in sequence. And my preference would be in order CC, BE, and then AC. I don't think we should try to do a three-letter one because it's just everyone's used to like LB, and then all the other ones are kind of two letters. So that's my feedback.
Trustee Chico, trustee Zia. All right. Dr. Munoz?
So just a point of clarification, because I feel like you have two different number ones, so just to...
I will defer CC, everybody knows CC's City College. So I think we're probably better off with that.
And the county may not give it to us, but if we say, hey, that's one, that's two, that's three.
Sure.
They assign it, we'll see what we get.
Thank you so much for the feedback. So again, just to summarize, we will put forward CC as our first-choice preference, BE as our second-choice preference, and AC as our third-choice preference, and hope we get at least one of them. Thank you for the direction.
Sounds good. Thank you. Madam Secretary, would you please roll call vote? I believe we already did a roll call. This is on the motion. We did a roll call vote on the amendment.
Sure.
Student trustee Gonzales advisory vote?
Aye.
Virginia Baxter?
Aye.
Herlinda Chico?
Aye.
Vivian Malauulu?
Aye.
Uduwakjo Entuck?
Aye.
Sunny Zia?
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously. Before we take a procedural short recess to facilitate bond resolution signatures, I would like to take a moment to thank the bond management team, the bond counsel, the various groups who went out into the community and conducted polling and who brought the information back and have given us various presentations. I'd also like to take a moment to thank our ad hoc committee on the Board, Dr. Baxter and trustee Entuck, for the hard work that they did with the research and bringing the information back, presenting. We had a board retreat last week, and at that retreat, we got an entire presentation and hammered out a lot of details. A lot goes into these bonds, the language, wordsmithing, making sure that we convey the image that we need to convey and that the public is aware of the needs that we have. So hopefully, the voters will pass this in November. So we're going to call a short five-minute recess. Don't go too far, and then we'll go back to the regular agenda item, which I believe is Section 5. Thank you.
So we will go ahead and get started. We are going to move on to Section 5 on the agenda. And we will begin, and I'll give him a few moments to just get everything started. Item 5.1 is our Superintendent President Report.
Thank you, Board President Malauulu. Good evening. It is my pleasure to provide updates for this past month. I'm honored to be included in the Los Angeles Times LA Influential List. While this article highlighted my background and individual contributions, this recognition also brought attention to our collective efforts at LBCC to drive positive change and impact within our community. It really is a testament and dedication and the hard work of our Board of Trustees, faculty, staff, and managers on behalf of our students. Together, we are making significant strides in education and community engagement. I am proud to represent LBCC on this prestigious list. We sold more than 2,400 tickets for our very first Summer Fest and Drone Show, and I'm telling you, it was an amazing experience. Here's a video recapping the event.
Good evening, everyone. How we doing tonight? I'm loving the energy. Welcome to Long Beach City College and the historic Veterans Memorial Stadium. Let's hear some noise. Chico, I'd like to welcome all of you for our very first-ever Long Beach City College and Long Beach City College Foundation show.
I want to thank our generous sponsors for the event. I also just want to say on a personal note, when I first became interim president, I spent a lot of time out in the community, having conversations with different community leaders. And I always like to ask this question. I would ask folks, you know, what is your favorite memory of LBCC? And I would say probably half the folks I would speak with and meet talked about when LBCC used to have the fireworks show at Vet Stadium, and how that, they remember as kids going to Vet Stadium as a family and watching the fireworks show. And as you know, we discontinued that, I think, about 15 years ago, is my understanding. And so that was, you know, that opportunity, and you think of all the generations that were impacted by that experience, kind of went away. And I just love that, the idea of bringing back a drone show, that kind of captures that energy of the fireworks show. And it was amazing to see Vet Stadium packed with thousands of children and families. It was really a beautiful event. So again, a big shout-out and appreciation to LBCC's Event and Filming Services, Jay Lopez and his team, for coming up with this idea, and the LBCC Foundation, Paul Kaminsky and his team as well. And we really are looking forward to next year's show even better. Last month, I had the privilege of joining over 500 people who welcomed U.S. Transportation Secretary Pete Buttigieg to Long Beach for the Port of Long Beach's groundbreaking event for the Pier B On-Dock Rail Support Facility. This project will triple the port's capacity for on-dock rail. The success of the Port of Long Beach is vital for our community, as it creates more opportunities for our students like internships, scholarships, and career placement. The port's ongoing commitment to sustainability aligns with our educational goals, ensuring our students are prepared for the ever-evolving job market. Congratulations to our partners at the Port of Long Beach for the significant new construction Big congratulations to LBCC's very own Dr. Sonia De La Tore Inigas on being named a 2024 Excellence in Education Policy Fellow. This prestigious recognition highlights Dr. De La Tore's commitment to advancing educational equity policies and supporting the success of our students. We are proud to have her as part of our LBCC community, and congratulations and felicidades. And we just heard that our very own Dean of Counseling and Student Support Services is now officially Dr. Javier Villasenor. Congratulations to Dr. Villasenor on this incredible accomplishment. I love this. Next, I would like to extend a warm welcome to our new faculty members joining us this academic year. I had a chance to say hello to them last month during the orientation, and I'm excited to have their expertise and enthusiasm added to our college community. I have to say, you know, we always attract outstanding faculty, but I'm particularly excited about this year's cohort. I had the opportunity to participate in many of their final interviews, and I just was completely overwhelmed and blown away by the caliber of faculty that have been applying to our institution, and we're just really excited to welcome them. I'll be welcoming our new part-time faculty at their orientation later this month. We look forward to the innovative ideas and fresh perspectives they will all bring to our classrooms and campus. Welcome to the LBCC family. Sorry, this is sticking here. The LBCC Foundation hosted its Summer Family Fun Day last week, and I was happy to see Board President Malauulu and Vice President Baxter there, as well as LBCC's partners, Pools of Hope and Children's Theater Long Beach, who are operating a six-week, not two, not four, but six-week summer wellness camp at no cost for 180 children from North Long Beach. The children learned to swim at our world-class aquatic center and enjoyed interactive theater activities. A huge thank you to Pools of Hope, Children's Theater, the Earl B. and Lorraine Miller Foundation, the Munzer Foundation, and the Aquatic Capital of America Foundation, along with the LBCC Foundation and our athletics team for making this program happen. We are celebrating our third successful year of this program. In just a few weeks, we will start our new academic year on August 26. And for our employees, don't forget that August 23 is our annual College Day. This year's theme is Future Forward: Building Belonging and Beyond. I look forward to starting the fall semester soon. And in closing, next week, we'll be hosting Discover LBCC at the annual summer concert here on campus, Friday, August 16. We will have a free concert featuring our favorite local '80s cover band, Knight Rider, here at the Liberal Arts Campus. The event starts at 5:00 p.m. I invite our entire campus community and our community at large to bring your picnic blankets, lawn chairs, and join us on the front lawn, south of the A Building. Thank you to Long Beach Councilmember Megan Kerr for her sponsorship. More info can be found on our website, and this includes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Munoz. We will move on to Section 6 on the agenda, which is Presentations, and we have none. Section 7 is Board of Trustees. 7.1, Executive Summary, Legislation and Policy Update. This is an information item only. Dr. Munoz, is there actually, other than the monthly legislative report attachment, is there a report on that? All right. For the benefit of the public, there is an attachment available on Board Docs, which is our monthly legislative report. Item 7.2 is a Resolution Regarding Board Members' Absence. This is an action item. Once I read out what the action will be, I'll entertain a motion and a second, that the Board of Trustees adopt Resolution 080724B, authorizing compensation to trustee Herlinda Chico for the meeting of June 26, 2024, from which she was absent as submitted. California Education Code 72024D provides that a member may be paid for any meeting when absent if the Board, by resolution duly adopted and included in its minutes, finds at the time of the meeting he or she is performing services outside of the meeting for the Community College District, he or she was ill or on jury duty, or the absence was due to a hardship deemed acceptable by the Board. The compensation shall be a charge against the funds of the district. Is there a motion? We've got a motion by Trustee Antuck. Is there a second? I will second the motion for the purpose of discussion. We have a motion and a second. Is there a discussion on this item? Trustee Zia?
Thank you, President Malauulu. I can't tell from the resolution, and forgive me if I'm missing it, what the reason for the absence was and what the benefit for the district was for the students. If Trustee Chico can say a little bit more about that and help explain for the public and for my edification, I'd appreciate it.
Trustee Chico?
Great. Thank you for asking for the clarification. We received an invitation, the college received an invitation from Congressman Garcia to represent the college at the White House for a pride reception that was being hosted at the White House. The invitation automatically goes to board officers, so I believe it was offered to President and Vice President, who both declined. I was offered, I don't know exactly if, what the conversation was with Trustee Antuck, but I was offered the opportunity. I said yes. Initially, we were supposed to, I was supposed to zoom in. So I was supposed to attend the event and zoom in, and I believe there was a mix-up and my, the address, the loc- event and Zoom in, and I believe there was a mix-up, and my, the address, the location wasn't included on the agenda in time. And so we weren't able to Zoom in, but that was the intention. So I didn't want to miss the meeting, but at that point, I couldn't participate.
Any additional discussion? Yes, trustee Zia.
Yeah, I just, I didn't hear the benefit for the students by celebrating in a pride party at the White House, so if you can expand on that, please.
Sure. It wasn't, it wasn't just a pride party, you know. Pride starts, it started with a protest. This is, it's a huge deal for the LGBTQ community and for those of us that have been fighting for a long time. So to represent our college and the students and our faculty and the work that we've been doing to be an inclusive college was wonderful, particularly because there were people from all over the United States. I was talking to a woman from Florida who thanked us for the work that we were doing when I told her how inclusive our college is, because they're battling language at their school board level. So our education and the rights of our students are under attack, and it's really important that we show solidarity, that we show up and we represent. So I felt that it was a great opportunity to represent the college, which is what I
Trustee Untuck.
Yeah, thank you. I just want to say I'm in support of this effort and make the motion, but I agree with trustee Chico. You know, we get criticized for being all talk, no action, and part of our board goals is to be inclusive. We are fortunate to have openly gay congress, member of Congress that represents us, and when we get an invitation to go to the White House, that speaks volumes. That was in the media, that reaffirms our position that we are inclusive, that we are welcoming college, that everyone does belong at Long Beach City College. And I think trustee Chico was apropos to go, as she just got the award for being LGBT champion from the center, I think, last month. So did I get asked to go? No, but that's a discretion of the president. So I have, it's fine with me. I have no qualms, and I supported the measure, and if it happens again, I think we should do the same thing and be able to act on what we talk about and what aligns with our board goals and the school's goals and our mission as an institution, that it's going to better the students every single day.
Anyone else?
So I would like to weigh in on this. I was invited to attend this event at the White House by Congressman Garcia. I couldn't make it. I was actually in Canada for work at an ILW caucus and convention, and when asked, trustee Baxter wasn't able to attend. And because trustee Chico had just been recognized with the milestone achievement by the LGBTQ Center here in Long Beach, I never in a million years thought that one of our colleagues on the board would have an issue with allowing trustee Chico to represent us, considering the many accolades that she's received and all the work she's done, not just for the LGBTQ community. I mean, she was the one who got the pride flag raised here on campus. She's done so much here in the community, but also for our disability, our disabled community and so many other community members of various different backgrounds. Never in a million years did I think that somebody on this board would question or challenge that invitation or my decision to extend the invitation to trustee Chico, but here we are, right? Always something, always something. So trustee Chico, I was very grateful that you were able to attend. I would have gone down the line to trustee Untuck, had you not been able to attend, and I think you wouldn't have been able to attend either, if I'm not mistaken. I don't remember, but I thought maybe I'd heard, yeah, it was board meeting night, like it was, you know, it was, there was an issue. Yeah, there was a board meeting night, that's what it was. And then to add to the complication, trustee Chico did make an effort to attend remotely on Zoom. I clearly distinctly remember that there was some mishap that occurred with the location not being posted on the agenda properly, so she couldn't attend. So I have no problem supporting this. Hey, everybody, to the public, Long Beach City College was asked to attend an event at the White House by our sitting congressman, who used to work at LBCC, who is an openly gay man and advocate of LGBTQ. We're not going to decline that invitation. We're not going to pass that opportunity. And the fact that we have to sit here at the dais and waste our precious time defending that decision just blows my mind, but it just goes to show the pettiness and it just goes to show the, just, you know, this is what we have to deal with, everyone. And it's just, you know, one example of the hundreds of examples of the things that we have to deal with. So I would like to call for the question, Madam Secretary, so that we can vote on compensating trustee Chico for being in Washington, D.C., representing the LGBTQ members of our community as a guest from Long Beach Community College at the White House.
Can I just say one thing?
Sure.
Okay. Thank you, President Malauulu. When I was asked, and I was asked if I wanted to go, and I did say no, it was a board meeting and also I had other things going on in my life, it was never explained to me that expenses were involved, and that's where I have a problem. I'm voting yes, but I do have a problem with the fact that expenses were involved. I don't know how much, because nobody has told me, but I know there were expenses involved. I do agree that it is an honor for Long Beach City College. If somebody hadn't gone, it would have been an insult to the congressman that we were officially invited. So I mean, I'm very, very glad that trustee Chico went, but I think it probably should have been explained to me better, and now that I know, I will keep that in mind. So thank you.
Go ahead, Dr. Munoz.
If I could just offer a little bit more information and my points of reflection, if possible. I think the college has worked very hard over the last several years to build a very strong relationship with Congressman Garcia, and he has been so generous to us. As you all recall, at the last State of the Union, not the one that just passed, but the one prior, he extended an invitation as his one guest that he was allowed to bring to the State of the Union, our student ambassador, one of our president's ambassador, who was a student. And, you know, we did cover his expenses, and so our philosophy is that if you are on college business, representing the district in these different opportunities that provide advocacy opportunities for the district, it makes sense to support. And so, as I mentioned, we have had a history, so this isn't the first time he's engaged with us. So in fact, what I think and I respect so much is that every year, he thinks of us. He finds some way to include the college in some, in some shape or form. As I mentioned, last year, it was having our student, our DACA student, attend the State of the Union, which we all know was such a transformational, life-changing experience for Alexis. And so this year, he was given the opportunity to bring a guest to the pride reception, which, as you know, the LGBTQ community has historically been excluded from those spaces, and we've even seen, depending upon who's in the White House, whether we're even welcomed in those spaces. So it's a very historic, I think, invitation to be able to have that come to the college. And so that's why when it was presented to me, I deferred to the board. So it wasn't naming me or the board, but a representative from the college, and so I deferred it to the board, as, because, you know, I wouldn't attend, because I need to be here for our board meetings. That's my first priority. So we kind of went down the line of succession to identify who would be in best position to represent us in D.C. So I just wanted to provide some additional context and information.
All right. Once again, I'd like to call for the question, please. Student trustee Gonzalez. Virginia Baxter.
Aye.
Herlinda Chico.
Aye.
Vivian Malauulu.
Aye. Point of order, you can't vote on this, trustee Chico. It's a conflict of interest. You have to abstain, like you've done in the past.
No problem. I'll abstain.
Udawak Joe Untuck.
Aye.
Sanie Zia. Motion carries. All right. We're going to move on to item 7.3 on the agenda, Board Protocols. This is a review and update. Dr. Munoz, is this the item that we had discussed earlier? Forgive me, I'm losing track. Are we tabling this to a future meeting? All right. I'll entertain a motion in a second that we table this board protocol, or we're going to go for it? All right, never mind. No motion and no second. This is a discussion information item. Superintendent President Dr. Mike Munoz will lead a discussion reviewing and updating board protocols. Dr. Munoz, I defer to you.
Thank you, Board President Malauulu. I'm going to wait for some, a handout to go down to make sure everyone has a copy. Can we pass, yeah, if you can pass that down to trustee Untuck, trustee G, or trustee Gonzalez, not trustee G, sorry, G, and Dr. Baxter. Okay, thank you. So as a follow-up to our board retreat from last week, there was a desire by the board to revisit their board protocols specifically around the college or the district taking legislative and policy positions. So what you have before you is the adopted board protocols, and in green, I've added some recommended language for consideration by the board. So what you'll see here is under conference travel, I've added from one conference to slash training, and the reason why that is, is some of the things that you might be interested in participating in that will help meet and fulfill the accreditation standards for board professional development of the board might not necessarily be a conference. It might be a training, or a seminar, or a workshop. So from, well, that kind of got loud for a moment, I apologize. So my thought was just so that there's just better clarity, I'm recommending that you all consider including conference slash training, so that it would be a little bit more inclusive of the other types of opportunities that you might be seeking. And then under district legislative and policy positions, if I can, I'd like to frame the rationale behind this recommendation, but know that the board can go in many different directions. So I'm not saying this is how you should, what you should choose, but based on some of the things I've heard, I feel that this might really satisfy some of the needs. So as was discussed at a prior meeting, there were some concerns that came about on how the district goes about making policy position decisions or legislative position decisions. And so what I'd like to propose is the following, that legislative and policy positions be reviewed annually at the December or January board meetings, and that's where Carl and our lobbyists that we work with, or our advocacy groups, I should probably refer to them as, come, and we present in-depth different potential legislative priorities that are outlined by maybe ACCT at the federal level, or the league at the statewide level, and maybe just other areas of interest that might really be local and specific to Long Beach, but still want to have the board take a position on. And so we have that general presentation either at the December or January board meeting. That slate gets approved, and then we have direction. But as you can imagine, different points and times throughout the year, we might have additional pieces of legislation, or the best way I can describe it is legislation evolves. So maybe something that's approved by the slate in December or January, we take that position, but as that bill works through committees, amendments are made, and I might be asked to take positions specifically on some of those amendments, there is not always going to be time to come back before the full board to get feedback before the time lapses about making a commitment. And so really, as I've kind of sat in the seat for the last three and a half years, it seems to me that federal and state legislation policies, that if we take policies outside of the annual board meeting, that what I'm proposing is that I would review that with the board president. So I would meet with the board president, so let's just say, Bachelor's of Science in Nursing, for example, the board says, yes, we support BSNs, but as it works through committee, there might be some key parts of an amendment that they're asking us to take a position on, or maybe ask us to call one of our locally elected officials, like Senator Gonzalez, because she serves on that committee that's going to vote, whether it goes to the suspense file or it moves to a full floor vote, that I still have the ability to consult with board president to take a position on something like that. However, what seems to be maybe potentially a flashpoint at different times is local city and county legislative and positions, policy positions. That seems to hit home a little closer for us. So what I would recommend is for local city and county legislative or policy positions taken outside of the annual board meeting, that those would be added to future board meetings for full discussion and direction from the board prior to taking positions. So it seems to me that the local measures tend to be a little bit more, I don't want to use the word controversial, but that might just require a little bit more in-depth discussion by the board, but for federal and state, that we allow the nimble, to be nimble and be flexible, and allow for me to continue the practice of consulting with board president for positions that occur outside of the annual meeting. And so that's essentially what I'm recommending for consideration and as a starting point for discussion. And then there are, you know, other options that we could explore as well, if this is not a recommendation that the board is willing to accept.
Thank you, Dr. Munoz. Is there any discussion on this item? Trustee Chico.
I like those recommendations, Dr. Munoz. I think that may address some of the issues. One concern I do have, or I don't know how we're going to, to address it, is in here, the trustee who made the request will be provided an opportunity to introduce the agenda item at the board meeting. Is that in conflict if a trustee is censured once or twice?
I don't have the actual central language in front of me, so I would have to revisit that and that question.
Okay. If we can just check into that, just want to make sure that we're not violating anything we've set down. Thanks.
Trustee Untuck.
Yeah. I've been through the development of four-state budgets professionally, and I think the frequency is too infrequent. I think, you know, January is good, because that's kind of the beginning. The governor announces the governor's budget proposal, initial bills are offered, but the deadline in committees don't happen until like April, and so it's very general in the beginning, and it gets more narrow. And then the May revise is also a very significant policy and budget. I mean, we're very connected to the state. The federal is nice, but it's not an every-year issue. And then in July is the month off before they go back to the end of legislative session, which is usually in August. And so that's kind of the last time to take positions on bills that will be considered by the state legislature is in July. And then after that is the budget, it gets also usually adopted in June, but really doesn't get adopted till August. And so kind of seeing what are all the bills that actually got passed and signed, we don't know that till September or October. And so thinking whether we want to do it quarterly, or we want to stagger it, aligned with the legislative calendar that happens every year is in the state constitution, I think that would be a more appropriate time for decision points for the board. Of course, if there's updates and critical things that need to happen in between, but those are opportunities for our lobbyists in D.C. and Sacramento to give board reports, or it's time for our staff to go over what's transpired. I mean, sometimes there's gotten amendment bills that were a totally different bill all of a sudden in August, now it says Long Beach City College shall do X, Y, Z. Oh, we got, you know, we got to move, you know, we got to take a position. So I would just speak for more frequency, and maybe we can noodle on exact months, but it'd kind of be at least a quarterly to align with key deadlines, so that we can kind of get what's introduced, what's been amended, what actually got voted on, and then also talk about what our actions that we took, you know. You know, a lot of times, click on legislative information website, you can see in the report who's all taking positions is public, you know, so being able to talk to what bills we actually were listed on, or what committees we spoke on. Because the other thing is like, yeah, we're supportive of a bill, but just sending a letter is not. Because the other thing is like, yeah, we're supportive of a bill, but just sending a letter is nice, but actually going to testify as a witness, or be there to say yes at the hearing, or some other related advocacy work around it, we could be missing out, or we may need to be there. Then, I also think September is a good time as a check-in, because that's when all the ballot measures get numbered, and lettered, and come out, and it's not election day yet, so we can say, well, how do we feel about? I mean, this is what we did too last time, Prop 20, Prop 16, state measures several years ago, I think in 2020, that we voted on, you know, in the summer, September. And so, you know, just thinking of that timeframe, and, you know, it's, I think it's like, you know, things are being developed. I mean, until yesterday, there was no, we didn't know what the city was gonna do measures-wise until last night. You know, even the county, we didn't know. The signatures were gathered, it had to be certified for the county housing measure. You know, that wasn't really clear if that was gonna come until June. You know, so there's a lot of things in development, that once it gets to the final point, or the final configuration, I think that's also the appropriate time for us to weigh in, to say, yes, we, you know, we agree with this, or we don't, you know. So just my feedback.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Dr. Munoz, thank you for taking the time to revisit some of these board protocols. I think we all understand why some of these items do need to be revisited from time to time. I also appreciate the position that you're in in having to make decisions. You know, we give you certain inherent authority as your contractual right and duty to lead this district. So I know that sometimes you are placed in precarious situations where you've gotta make decisions on the fly, which would impact our students and our budgets, especially when it comes to funding from the state level, or grants that happen very quickly. So, you know, we have demonstrated our trust for you. It's just unfortunate how sometimes things get twisted, or spun out of context, and that's why we're doing this. So if there's nothing in particular that you want to flag other than what you already have, I think you have the direction of the board to proceed. It is not an action item, and without any opposition or exception...
I just had a question.
As I was saying one moment, trustee Zia, without any opposition from the board, then I think you do have direction to proceed. I know that I had asked if anyone else needed to speak, and no one else said anything...
You didn't give me a chance to respond, you proceeded ahead, and that's what...
You're interrupting me again. I was about to turn to you and say, trustee Zia, second-time speaker. You love interrupting people, trustee Zia, could you please show decorum? We're actually having a conversation about board protocols, conduct, behavior. I was going to yield to you, second-time speaker. Trustee Zia, go ahead.
For the record, this is my first time speaking on this item, and I didn't interrupt you. You didn't wait for my response. I do agree with the suggestion of making more frequency and legislative calendar for the first bullet, and perhaps having a representative be present for some of these hearings. I would, I would recommend that if trustees are going to go up there, that they help defray the cost, or pay out of their own pocket, especially if they're... We're in a fiscal situation, and we should always keep that in mind and be fiscal stewards, just a suggestion, just a perspective. I don't understand the last piece. So you're suggesting only speaking to the president for the federal and state legislative or policy positions? I guess I do understand it, but if I could just offer a recommendation that whoever the board president is, that they exercise deference, and also get input from other trustees, and not act unilaterally without obtaining insight from the rest of the board on the position to give direction to the superintendent president, because the board president may have a variant viewpoint from the rest of the board. And that's just one enhancement I would suggest. Otherwise, I, because because of our policy position as policymakers, that's just something I would offer for enhancement to the language.
Second-time speaker, trustee Intuck?
Yes, you know, one method that the city of LA does, when they introduce items, the council member writes it down, and then they get a second signature on the policy item. So having an opportunity to build collaboration with a colleague, and it's not a Brown Act violation for two people to talk about something and introduce it together, but that might be a process that we would consider as far as, so one person can't just keep putting agenda items that are unrelated, or a personal issue, or personal bias on the agenda. Also, I do like the idea of the president and vice president doing that. I know when I was in student government, we used to have two dual signatures for every bank transaction to make sure that things weren't done unilaterally, and we've had that problem on this board, where the president has acted unilaterally. And also, I wanted to speak to trustee Chico's question that wasn't addressed. I agree that if you have, are on a disciplinary reprimand, which we do have on this board, that is not concluded, we're a unique situation that I'm not aware of any other trustee in California who's been censured twice, or has received a disciplinary reprimand, but also has been featured in a Chronicle of Higher Education as the rogue trustee, that we need to consider those items when we're making decisions, and who's involved in decisions. And, you know, while there's legal responsibilities and representation, there are optional items that we have decided to take away and suspend because of misconduct, dishonesty, attacking of colleagues, you know, accreditation, or near accreditation violations. And so I agree that we should consider, or have in our policy, Dr. Munoz, that if that is a situation with anyone, that, you know, the privileges are not granted.
Anyone else? Okay, so I recall the first time I was board chair, excuse me, board vice president, 2018 to 2019. I remember even as board vice president, I was excluded from decisions made by then-board president trustee Zia. So I fully appreciate this board protocol, agenda item, and the discussion. And I do think it's important to have the entire board be a part of decision-making when it comes to matters that affect the entire board. This is one of the reasons why we've had to implement some of these changes. Some of the decisions that were made without consultation of the entire board back in 2018 and 2019 have had costly ramifications, very expensive ramifications, that not only impacted the board, and continue to impact the board, but have impacted the entire district. So had the board been privy to some of the decisions that were being made at that time, perhaps we wouldn't be in the situations that we're in today. Which is why we can safeguard Dr. Munoz and the rest of the board with decision-making protocol. So with that, we're gonna move on the agenda to the next item, which is, oh, I'm sorry, Dr. Munoz, that's right, you did, you did wanna make a couple of clarifications. After that, we're gonna move on to the trustee report, item 7.4.
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanna make sure that, because there was a lot of discussion, so from my own point of clarification, if I can repeat what I think I'm hearing, and get a thumbs up, a thumbs down. Okay, so I heard from two trustees a request of more frequent meetings, so not just one annual meeting. So I will speak with our, you know, we have a legislative advocacy group that we work with as a consultant. I'm going to consult with that advocacy group and ask them, what would be, based on the legislative timelines, budget timelines, all the different factors, what would be the best touchpoints to build into the calendar of scheduled meetings? So more frequency is what I heard. When and how many to be determined after I consult with our consultant, if that's okay. And then in terms of the consulting with superintendent president and board president, maybe I can flush that out a little bit more in my mind. When, if you all recall, when Kindred Muriel was here last week at our board retreat, you know, she's been a superintendent president at three schools, very well-respected, has been a, you know, led accreditation for multiple districts that really were struggling with accreditation. So she is kind of like the go-to, most knowledgeable person on these matters. And when I asked her and said, you know, how did you approach this? She kind of laid out that, you know, for items that were federal and state, she would consult with board president before taking a position if it was something that was timely, that was outside of that general meeting. Or, as trustee Intuck mentioned, you get multiple amendments, and what you may have said thumbs up on in January looks very different in March, or April, or May, when we're getting questions from our advocacy group to take a position. So what she said that was that they typically would, she would typically meet with her board president, and if something was deemed potentially, that's where judgment and trust matters, right? Like as a, as a board that we have trust with each other. If something was thought to be potentially controversial, between the board president, the superintendent president, that's where the judgment would be exercised to say, you know, on this item, it might create some division amongst the board, or there might be diverse thought on this. Let's not make a decision on this and take it to the full board. So that's kind of the checks and balances. I think to me, that's, as I've had conversations with other superintendent presidents and chancellors, that seems to be the standard protocol. But if the board wants something additional than that, we could consider that I consult with both the board president and the board vice president. That's obviously an additional step we can put in. So I think on that, I guess what I would refer, what I would recommend is just adding superintendent president, and board president, and vice president. And then that doesn't violate the Brown Act, because we're staying under three. But it allows still the flexibility to be exercised with good judgment when flexibility is needed. I just, I'm really trying to prevent this to become so restrictive, that then Long Beach City College is sitting on the sidelines, because this is just too complicated for me to navigate.
Alright. Thank you, Dr. Munoz. Alright, we're gonna move on to item 7.4 on the agenda, Board of Trustees Report. Trustee Baxter, Dr. Baxter, thank you for volunteering.
Put that timer on, Daria. Okay. On July 22nd, Uduwak and I attended the bond meeting. As I said before, this was something, it was very enlightening to see how they approach deciding on the bonds and all those kinds of things. So it was, I was really appreciative of the board to appoint me to that committee. Then on July 24th, I attended the Rotary Meeting, and the reason I bring it up is they gave out the Mark Bigsby Award, and this is a $5,000 check to a student. Her name is Grace Hughes, and Grace went to Long Beach City College and got the regular Rotary Scholarship, and then she went to Cal State and got their regular Rotary Scholarship, and so she was selected. And what, I love going to these things and meeting students who are making a difference, going to school, you know, busy, 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 but they still have time to volunteer and do great things. And so congratulations to Grace Hughes. Probably shouldn't say how much money she got, but anyway, she did. Then on July 26th, this was fun, Barbara Ellis had a 100th birthday party for Bob Ellis, who is no longer with us, at Joe Jost, because Bob was born in 1924, and Joe Jost was started in 1924. And I couldn't believe the number of people who go to Joe Jost. I have to tell you, I don't hang out at Joe Jost, but I mean, the place was packed, and she had the back room, but it was so busy, they had other people there, and they kept talking, when we were talking, what's going on there. And anyway, it was a great celebration of Bob's life, and just a wonderful guy, and a very generous donor to Long Beach City College. Then on July 31st and August 1st, we had the board retreat, worked out very, very well, and I was so glad we got together, and I think whoever thought up this idea, which is several years ago, was, maybe it was me, it was a great idea. Then on August 1st, before the board retreat, the second day, we honored the kids who got their six weeks of swimming lessons at the summer pool party, and to meet the people who donated to make that happen. And this is a great thing, and I wanna praise Dr. Munoz and the foundation, is that this did not cost us anything. All they cost us was the chlorine in the pool, because donors, private donors, mostly foundations, gave the money to pay for the teachers and the assistants and all that kind of stuff. And to see these kids, they were so excited. There were 280 students who went through this program, so that was just terrific. Then on August 7th, again, another Rotary Scholarship Meeting. This was today, and that was at 11 o'clock, and then the Rotary Meeting, and then I had the Rotary Investment Committee, and I wanted to be on this committee, because I wanted to check out how they're doing, and they're doing very, very well. And they are the largest donor, annual donor to Long Beach City College, and the second-largest to Cal State Long Beach annual donations. Then on, oh, I wanted to remind people, on August 16th, it was brought up, we're having the gathering with the concert with Night Rider, and it's from 5 to 8. And because I'm involved in this a little bit, I suggested to Dr. Munoz that we have a DJ, because Night Rider could only perform so long, because they perform also at the Gaslight. And so it was kind, they only performed like less than an hour, it seemed like, less than an hour. Anyway, so we're gonna have music the whole time. Thank you, Dr. Munoz, from 5 to 8. And I encourage all our community members, and anybody else wandering the streets of town, to come out on Friday, August 16th, from 5 to 8 p.m. That's, and look at that, I got a minute and 3 seconds left. Okay.
Thank you, Dr. Baxter. Who'd like to go next? Alright, trustee Zia?
Daria, if you don't mind putting up, can you not start the clock yet? Alright, here we go. So on July 23rd, I had the great pleasure and honor of going to our very own Majida Wesley and Joe Tregel's wedding. If you recall, Majida, it was because of Majida that we have our program for our homeless students. So in 2015, many articles have been written about Majida, and how she and I connected through Viking Newspaper and a faculty member. And I was able to provide her a scholarship, and together with Dr. Baxter, subsequently, we started the committee in helping our homeless students. And since then, we've helped over 2,000 students become housed. And when we first started, it was just a closet that we had for food and hygiene products, and now it looks like a grocery store. If you can go to the next, right, this is Majida and Joe. For those of you don't know, this is San Francisco City Hall. I had the honor of being in her wedding, and Majida went ahead, got housing, and all I did was write a recommendation letter for her and provide her with a scholarship. But because of her, we were able to meet a lot of students, and she opened up the door. And since then, she went and got her bachelor's degree in finance, and is one of the top auditors in San Francisco. As you can see, she's my pride and joy, and the reason why, my purpose, my why of why I do what I do on this board, and what gives me hope, especially when things get pretty negative. If you go to the next, this is us, and she, she's also one of the top auditors for Blue Shield now, in their compliance and fraud department, and helping waste fraud and abuse. Next picture, this is her and her husband. And trustee Baxter, you were very missed, and we gave you much love and a shout-out. Next slide, please. So the lady in the colorful dress on the right-hand side, that's Majida's mom, Julia, and this is our beautiful delegation in, who were in the wedding for Majida and Joe, as they're affectionately called Joejida. So I'm very proud of Majida, as you can see, she's almost like a surrogate daughter. If we, once we get housing, I'd like to suggest, perhaps we can have her name be honored on the building somehow, because of her efforts, she opened up the door and the pathway for us to do so much work for our students facing homelessness and hunger. And it would be great, I told her we can offer her... and hunger. And it would be great. I told her we can offer her a tour and see what she has started for us and see where we're at today, just as a great success story and what LBCC has done and is capable of. And that's pretty much it. I know a lot of the other events are going to be covered by our, my fellow board members, but I just wanted to leave you with that. And a big mazel tov and congratulations to Majida and Joe, or as they're affectionately called, Joe Jida. I love you. You're the apple of my eye. You're the reason, students like you are the reason why I get up every day and come to do my public service on this Board of Trustees. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Chico.
I wanted to start by saying on July 26th, which was my birthday, I turned 51. It's also the anniversary of the signing of the ADA, the Americans with Disability Act. So for the past three years, I've celebrated my birthday doing a disability pride event and did that again this year. And it was beautiful. In fact, it was huge. I want to give special acknowledgement to Jennifer Kumiyama, our alumni and our keynote speaker for our last commencement. She really organized this. And as this citywide ADA coordinator, she's really uplifting and shining a light on the needs of our, our community with different abilities. So very excited to participate in that. I also want to thank the Disabled Resource Center of Long Beach. I was, I received the Civic Leadership Award. And I was really, really proud of that work that I've done over the decades with DRC. In fact, when I was at the gala, they'd made mention that I'd probably been going to that gala for almost 20 years because of my work in the community. So thrilled with my partnership there and, and the work that, that the Disabled Resource Center does for not just our community, but also our students. I want to congratulate Dr. Muñoz. Being featured in the LA Times was a huge deal. And I know that with the accolades that you receive, the way that you are representing our college, you, you take the college with you. You shine a light on, on Long Beach City College. So I know, and I think this community knows, because every time I mention your name, everyone says, oh, love him, love him, he's doing great work. I want you to know that most people, or the people that I've spoken to, don't see this as, you know, shining the light on you. It is a light that's been shined on you. And you are bringing Long Beach City College into that light with you. And we appreciate that because you don't have to do that, but that's not your MO. That's not what you do. You really do care about the college and I appreciate that. The last thing I want to say is congratulations to our team for putting together an amazing drone show. You know, I, I, I'm not a fan of fireworks because I like animals and animals typically are scared of the fireworks. And it's, it's, you know, impactful, negatively impacting our, our environment. And so to see a drone show was a wonderful alternative to a fireworks show. I was surprised to find out later, because this weekend, I spent some time with Congress, former Congressman Alan Lowenthal, I didn't know he was there. He and Debbie bought tickets and went, yes. I didn't see him either, but he told me how fantastic that show was. And so I, I'm hearing it from all over the community that, that things that we're doing at Long Beach City College are pretty fantastic, not just academically, but also bringing in the community. I think that was one of the things that we've all really tried hard to do is to open up the space, open up the campus so that it is inviting, so that people get comfortable visiting our campus, so that they're comfortable enrolling in our campus. And so thank you to the entire team that put that together because it was spectacular. We did have a great turnout. The food, the band was killing it. It was part of my extended birthday celebration, so my entire family was there. And my niece, I mean, I had to pull her off of the track because she was dancing so much. It was fantastic. The kids were going crazy, the Fun Zone, everybody had a great time. It really was such a wonderful family event and inexpensive, right? Because things are so expensive nowadays. It was less than a ticket to the movies, you know? And so this was a wonderful event. I can't wait to, for us to do more. So thank you.
Thank you, trustee Intuck.
Yeah, thank you. I don't have a particular board report tonight, but do you want to speak to an item that brings me great concern? And it's really what we experienced last week at our retreat. And I really am concerned about trustee Zia's mental fitness, her ability to participate on this board, to serve her residents. The outbursts and uncontrolled behavior that we experienced in the retreat was beyond what I think I've seen from her. I, I've known trustee Zia for almost 12 years. And the increasing unstable erratic behavior that we're witnessing, I am concerned that we need to make sure that we are providing support and care. But also, we need to make sure that we have some type of third-party independent verification. I, I don't know, I don't know her condition. I don't know if there's undisclosed issue. But, you know, the event that happened at the Pier B groundbreaking, that behavior tonight, the attendance at the city council last night, you know, it's, it doesn't stop. And it's impeding this board and this college's progress. And there's nothing that we can do. Two censures, a disciplinary reprimand, that's what you do, you give to children. But we have no other options. And just the question for all of us in this college, we have ignored it for years. But it is a continuing and escalating issue. And I really want to ask Dr. Muñoz and board counsel Ewing and to work to see what can we do to make sure that we're providing the support. Because there's times I don't feel safe. I don't want to come to meetings. And none of us should feel that way. And, you know, yes, things are embarrassing and we can turn our cheek the other way, but it's just out of control. And we, we have to do something about it because it's not going to fix itself. You know, the crying, the complaining, saying, I'm never going to do it again. I feel like I'm in a domestic violence situation, relationship. You know, it's just unnecessary. And it's, it's been going on for too long. I mean, President Malalou said, you know, eight years, eight years that she's, you know, we all have to turn the other way and attempt to ignore it. And it's just, I am concerned. And so that's my board report tonight.
I have some items that I would like to report on. Dario, I sent you some pictures. Last month, I was at the ACCT Board Retreat. And this is at the Hawkeye Community College in Waterloo, Iowa. And I'd like to call your attention to the various partners that Hawkeye has with their community. They've got the University of Northern Iowa. They've got this Automation and Robotics Center, which I'm going to show you in the next picture. They've got an initiative with local tech works for Grow Cedar Valley. The Waterloo Community College area is adjacent to Cedar Rapids and Cedar Falls. And they have partners with Envision Architecture, which employs and gives internships to their students. Lincoln Savings Bank, which also hires their students. So this is an interesting initiative. Where we stayed was actually three large old buildings that used to belong to John Deere. I, I didn't send you that picture, but you guys know I take 50 million pictures everywhere I go. So the John Deere plant used to be housed there. And now Building 1 is the John Deere Museum, which was incredible to be able to see tractors and their evolution. And then the far right building was the hotel that we stayed in, which was a converted John Deere manufacturing, you know, factory, plant. And the silos are still there. And it was a very industrial-looking hotel. But the middle is where I'm standing. And they donated the building to the community college. And the community college was able to forge these partnerships. Okay, next slide, please. So the work that I'm doing, you know, in the community workforce, skilled workforce development with the Labor Center, my passion in getting that accomplished is largely connected to the work that I'm doing in the EDD program, which focuses on, you know, skilled workforce development in the age of automation. And I got to tour this facility, Automation and Robotics Center. If you'd like to see me, pull me, if you'd like to see it, pull me to the side. I've got videos. They actually had students there. I wasn't able to attend the Secretary of Labor Budichek visit at the Port of Long Beach. In fact, I was the one that was supposed to introduce him from ILWU, but my colleague Patricia Geary ended up introducing him because I was here. I was performing ACCT board duties that day. So I missed the whole Port of Long Beach event, but I heard all about it. And just to show you with the community here, the work that's possible, Long Beach City College is not the only community college in the country who is focusing on skilled workforce development and automation. All right, next slide, please. So this was the only real treat that we had. If you know anything about Iowa, you know that that's where Field of Dreams is. And the movie with Kevin Costner in the 80s, If You Build It, They Will Come. So we got to leave Waterloo and go an hour east to Dryersville, Iowa, where the Field of Dreams compound is. And they actually have a field. And we were so lucky because they were having a ghost game. And these are ghost players. And it was the coolest thing because they actually come out of the cornfield, they play games, kids are there, we got to hit the ball, throw the ball, run the bases. And then after about an hour, hour and a half, they walk back into the cornfield, just like the movie, the ghost players in the movie. So if you haven't seen Field of Dreams, and then our ACCT Board Chair gave us these shirts. Is this heaven? No, it's Iowa. And that's because of the movie. That's a line from the movie. So that's where I was for the ACCT Board Retreat. On Monday, the 22nd, I got to meet Vice President Kendra Madrid for the first time. We got to have a meeting with Dr. Muñoz. Welcome to the team. I'm very excited to have you here. On the 27th, I was also at the drone show. Could you show the picture of, okay, so my, my kids are not of the age where they can just jump in the car and get excited, no matter where mom takes them, right? My kids are at the age where they start groaning, they're grown, they don't want to go, they want to stay home, play video games. So on this particular Saturday, that's my son on the left, and that's my nephew on the right. They had football in the morning, and then they wanted to go see the new movie that came out, whatever it's called Deadpool. So I bribed them into going with me to this. And then I was taking them to the movies after. What was shocking to me is how much fun they had. They're 15-year-old boys who don't like to hang out with mom anymore. And they were at the Fun Fest. And I had to text them like, hey, come, the drone show is going to start. So this is two 15-year-old kids playing, you know, Connect Four in these games. Congratulations to the foundation on an amazing Summer Fest drone show. I hope we continue to have it. I also spoke to Congressman Lowenthal, retired congressman, who said to me on Saturday morning, what a great event he had. I didn't know he was there. But it just goes to show the impact that we have. The following week, I was at the board retreat as well, Wednesday and Thursday. And on the 1st, I attended the LBCC Foundation Pools of Hope event. Could you show that next picture, Dario? So this is as I walked up to the retreat. And this was the coolest thing to me. You can't really see the big screen in the back because of, you know, pixelation. But here it is, 5:12 p.m. in Long Beach, California. Our pool is bustling with activity. And guess what's playing on there? It's the U.S. Olympics, the swim competition from Paris, France. And I thought that was the neatest thing, that we get to watch the Olympics on the big screen at the pool. So thank you to our community for allowing such great things to happen. And my kids also swam in the old pool when they were little. So just a neat tie. And then on Saturday, the 3rd, I attended the North Long Beach Jazz Fest. It's another event that I attend every year. Councilmember Dr. Joanie Odi sponsors that event. So thank you to everybody. That wraps up my report. I know that we'll be seeing you soon at College Day and welcoming the campus community back on campus. So enjoy the rest of your summer because we're going to go hard as soon as school starts. So thank you, everybody. Now we're going to move on the agenda to Section 8. This is the consent agenda. Do any of my colleagues want to pull any of these items off the agenda? All right, seeing none, we will move on to Section 9 on the agenda, which is Human Resources. Oh, I'm sorry, we do. I'm sorry. I'll take a motion and a second for the consent. Trustee Baxter with the motion, trustee Intuck with the second. Madam, any discussion? Madam Secretary, roll call vote, please.
Student trustee Gonzalez? Virginia Baxter?
Aye.
Herlinda Chico?
Aye.
Vivian Malaulu?
Aye.
Udoak Joe Intuck?
Aye.
Sunny Zia?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. We'll go on to Section 9 on the agenda. Item 9, Section 9 is Human Resources. Item 9.1, recommended for compensation for an academic position. This is an action item that the Board of Trustees approves a compensation for the academic position as submitted. The recommendation is to approve an increase of one range on the management salary schedule for the Director DSPS due to the expanded scope and duties within the portfolios of those positions. The Director DSPS is currently set at range 13 on the management salary schedule. The scope of duties and responsibilities for this position has expanded significantly over time. Accordingly, the Superintendent President recommends the range be increased to range 14 on the management salary schedule effective July 1, 2024. This item was originally sent for board approval on June 26, 2024. The previously recommended salary of range 12 to 13 was incorrect and should have been entered as range 13 to range 14. I need a motion and a second. Trustee Baxter with the motion, trustee Intuck with the second. Any discussion? Madam Secretary, roll call vote, please.
No student trustee vote on this. Virginia Baxter?
Aye.
Herlinda Chico?
Aye.
Vivian Malaulu?
Aye.
Udoak Joe Intuck?
Aye.
Sunny Zia?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item 9.2, Employment Contract. I need a motion and a second that the Board of Trustees approves, ratifies the employment contract as submitted. The following employment contract provides the employee with a term of employment, a salary along with health and welfare benefits and life insurance. For Jose Ibarra, Assistant Director, EOPS Care and Cal Works, term July 1, 2024, December 31, 2024, salary $67,875. This is a new hire. I need a motion and a second.
He's not, it's new to this job. He's not a new hire.
Correct. Well, it says new hire.
Oh, does it?
So it is a new hire on the agenda.
Okay, sorry. Yeah, new hire for the position.
Not, not to the district, not to the district. New hire to the position. All right.
I'll second it.
So I heard trustee Chico with the motion, trustee Zia with the second. Any discussion on that item? Madam Secretary, roll call vote, please.
No student trustee vote. Virginia Baxter?
Aye.
Herlinda Chico?
Aye.
Vivian Malaulu?
Aye.
Udoak Joe Intuck?
Aye.
Sunny Zia?
Aye.
Motion carries. And congratulations, Jose, you've been sitting here all this time. Congratulations. All right, we're going to move on to Section 10 on the agenda, Academic Senate, Title 5, Section 53203, Item 10.1, no item. Section 11, Academic Affairs, Item 11.1, no items. Section 12, Administrative and Business Services, Item 12.1. We've already heard and voted on that item. We will move on to Section 13, Student Services, Item 13.1, no items. It's summer. That's why we have a light agenda. Section 14, Reports, Item 14.1, Board Committee Report. Would the Bond Board Committee like to do a final report out?
You want to report? Because you're so good at that. Well, you kind of.
Well, it's okay. You don't have to do it. I'm just asking that if you want to make a full circle and wrap it up.
More information.
Excellent. All right. Thank you very much. Item 15, Section 15, Public Comments on Non-Agenda Items. Madam Secretary, any requests?
No requests.
Thank you. And Section 16, Second Close Session, It Is Necessary. And Section 16, Second Closed Session, it is necessary. We will have further discussion and correct me if I'm wrong, but I think we need to go back to Item 1.4, 1.6, 1.7, and 1.8. So for those of you that are going to be here waiting for us to adjourn, it'll be a while. Thank you, it is 8:39, we are going to our second closed session.
All right, everybody. The time is 10:07. We are reconvening after our second closed session. Item 16.2, we have no reportable action. We're moving on to Section 17 on the agenda. Tonight, I would like to adjourn this meeting in honor and memory of Mr. John Cross, who was a lifetime resident on the west side of Long Beach. He was an eight-time president of the West Long Beach Neighborhood Association, and he was a dear friend of mine. And I was looking through my records and files. He passed away on Sunday. I've been in communication with his family. I was looking through my files, and I found a mailer that he did for me and a robocall that he did for me. And he was very instrumental in putting me in this seat. So to Mr. John Cross, we adjourn this meeting in your memory. And I think trustee Baxter also wanted to say a few words.
Yes, thank you. I'd like to adjourn the meeting in memory of Will Shaw. Will Shaw was a retired football coach, PE teacher, actually, I think, sociology teacher. And he died last week. And his funeral will be tomorrow, Thursday, tomorrow's Thursday. And he was, after he retired, he was a supporter of the athletic area and the foundation. And just a wonderful gentleman. And thank you for adjourning the meeting in memory of Will Shaw.
So once again, we'd like to adjourn in memory of Mr. Will Shaw and Mr. John Cross. The time is now 10:08. The next regularly scheduled regular meeting of the Board of Trustees will be held on Wednesday, September 11, 2024. Closed session at 4:30 and open session at 5:30. The meeting is now adjourned, and it is, sorry, 10:09.